I'd like to call to order the special formal meeting of the Iowa City City Council for November the 6th, 2017. Roll call.
Botchway.
Here.
Cole.
Here.
Dickens.
Mims.
Here.
Taylor.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Throgmorton.
Here. Welcome to all of you, especially welcome to your city hall. It's great to see all of you, especially to see our, the students we're going to be honoring tonight. Which brings us to item number two, Student Leadership Awards. So I'd like to ask Greta Burner, Leila Bazola, Juan Martinez, and Ulyssa Paz to come up, please. All right, cut it upside down. It's not going to work that way, is it? All right, so we have four terrific students here with us tonight, the first of whom is from Horace Mann Elementary. Can you hang on to those, Kingsley, the bottom ones? And her name is Greta Burner. And, you know, I have four leadership awards to hand out, and all of them say exactly the same thing. So what I'm going to do is read this for Greta, and then ask her to read her statement, and then ask each of you to read your statements, and I'll give you your awards as well, okay? Okay, it says, "Student Leadership Award. For your outstanding qualities of leadership within Horace Mann Elementary, as well as the community, and for your sense of responsibility and helpfulness to others, we recognize Greta Burner as an outstanding student leader. Your community is proud of you. Presented by the Iowa City City Council, November 2017." So, let me hand this to you, Greta. We could clap, be a good thing. So, could you read your statement, please?
I want to thank my class for voting for me, and my teachers for always being there. I believe that I won this honor because I have incredible role models whom I would like to acknowledge. Special thank yous to Lulu, Erin, Ada, and Zoe, who taught me to do my best and always be kind. When the going gets tough, just get tougher. Remember, you can shine too. Shoot for the moon. Even if you miss, you'll land among the stars. And always be kind to absolutely everyone. I'd also like to thank the city council for this honor, and for acknowledging student leaders in Iowa City.
Well done. I know you have a terrific role models, or two terrific role models, in your mom and dad. And your mom's sitting right over here. Where are you, Nora? Yeah, and there's your dad right over there. How you doing? Good to see you. Okay, so, we have others. All right, and these others all say the same thing, except the kids are from Mark Twain Elementary. So the first is Juan Martinez. Juan, could you read your statement, please?
Hi, my name is Juan Martinez, which you guys already know. I think I was chosen for this because I am a good, hardworking child who will do great things. I'm in the ELP, Safety Patrol, and a star student. I'm nice to my classmates and all my teachers. I'm kind to the staff and parents. I help in school fundraisers like the chip shop we just did. When I get out of school, I go to my room, in color, take my dogs for a walk, and practice my violin. On Fridays and Wednesdays, I go home, take my dogs out, and take a nap before church. When I get up, I get dressed to go to church, and when church is finished, I go home, have supper, then go to bed. And sometimes, when I get up late, and miss the bus. But my sister won't let that happen. She makes, she takes me to school for another beautiful day.
All right, excellent. So how many dogs do you have?
Two.
Two?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And you do occasionally miss a bus, is that what you said?
Yeah.
And your sister gets mad at you or something? Okay. All right, and the next is Ulyssa Paz. Are you Ulyssa? Thank you, okay. And again, the award says the same thing, except it's for you. So, could you read your statement?
Good evening, my name is Ulyssa Paz, and I'm a sixth grader at Mark Twain Elementary. I was chosen for the Citizenship Award because of the good examples I set for others and for the way I give back to my school. I set a good example by always getting homework in on time, getting started on work right away, and staying focused on learning. I gave back to my school by being a responsible safety patrol, taking on the role of conflict manager at younger students' recess, and providing baked goods for our school carnival. I want to thank the school council for providing this honor. These are the reasons why I was chosen for this award.
All right, excellent. So, conflict manager, that sounds like a pretty important role. You should be very proud of yourself for learning how to do that. All right, and the last one is for Leila Bazola. Yes? So, would you read your statement?
Yes.
Pardon me, I got to read the question.
Um, okay. Hi, I'm Leila, and I think I got picked for student council for being a hard worker, not the best student in the world because I make mistakes. Everyone makes mistakes. I'm going to redo lists of things I do to help my class and other people. Reading assignments. I try to get all my reading assignments done in time. I just recently finished my historical fiction book. Math. I'm not the best mathematician in the class, but I usually, usually it depends on what math problem it is. If it's easy, I help other people at my table. If it's hard, I ask for help from students at my table. Bad decisions. Sometimes I get carried away with making bad decisions, which I should be able to control. And of course, I have to face the consequences. You even get good consequences sometimes. Reading contest. I really want the whole sixth grade to reach 400 books by the first day of April. So I'm trying to read a lot of books. Friends. I have a lot of friends, not everyone in my, um, not everyone is my friend, but I'm friends with the friends I have because they make me feel, feel foot, full. I learn different things from all of them. How I feel about school. I feel safe at school. All the teachers are so cheerful at school. Sometimes I don't believe that anything like a school shooting could happen at Mark Twain.
Beautiful. It was great, really a great speech, thanks. So, I know there are really proud parents out here, so I'm looking at folks who are proud parents. You've done a great job bringing up these terrific kids. Congratulations to all of you. Okay, so, here's your award. Thanks. And I don't know, what did Matt always say? You know, I don't know, something about you can stay here and watch the rest of the council meeting, or go home and do your homework, or something like that. Anyhow, thanks for coming, and it's really, really a treat to give you your awards. All right, item three, Proclamations. We have one proclamation to read tonight. Whereas Native Americans, Native Hawaiians, and Alaska natives possessed rich, thriving cultures long before Europeans came to the North American continent, such that the framers were inspired by and modeled our nation in part on the Iroquois Confederacy. And whereas despite generations of reprehensible discrimination during which they were subjected to violence, deprivation, and forced assimilation, they endured and preserved their wisdom and skills. And whereas we honor the friendship and cooperation of the many sovereign tribes, and the diverse contributions of the Native American, Native Hawaiians, and Alaska Native individuals who continue to enrich our communities and strengthen our country by their presence, now therefore I, James A. Throgmorton, Mayor of the City of Iowa City, Iowa, do hereby proclaim November 2017 to be National Native American Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to celebrate Native American, Native Hawaiian, and Alaska Native history, traditions, and cultures. I think, Joe, you're going to come up and accept this proclamation, right?
On behalf of our native community here in Iowa City, and in the state of Iowa, I want to thank you, Mayor, and council members, and the city of Iowa City for recognizing national, this National Native American Heritage Month. I also want to thank you for the establishment of Iowa City, and subsequently Johnson County, as recognizing that the second Monday of October is Indigenous Peoples' Day. Our students here, our others in the native community, and across the state, thank you, Iowa City and the council. Migwetche, thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Item four, Consider Adoption of the Consent Calendar as Presented or Amended, and what I would like to receive is a motion to approve as amended, deferring item 4D5 to November the 21st.
Sumut, second.
Moved by Botchway, second by Thomas. Discussion, Susan?
Yeah, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. There's a couple of pieces in here, I think, that are, I of course can't find them at the moment now, with a lot of information. One is our annual TIF certification filing, and that's something that gets a lot of comment about in the community, in terms of what we do and don't do, and how that works. And if somebody happens to want to look at the packet and find it very quickly, it's the page 147 of our agenda packet. And it just talks about the many different projects across the community that we have done. I think the earliest start date in here is 2000, with lots of different projects, and extreme increases in taxable valuation that we have gotten in these projects, which means increased tax revenue for the city. So I would encourage folks to look at that, in light of what we do in terms of tax increment financing in the community. So it's a lot of, I think, important information that oftentimes gets overlooked.
I thought there were two things you were going to do?
That's okay.
No, just seven, okay. I'd also like to note that item 4E1 sets a November 21 public hearing on a proposed rezoning of about 22 acres adjacent to the east side of the intersection of McColster and South Gilbert. And I know there are several people who are interested in that particular rezoning. All right, so we have a motion. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Botchway.
Yes.
Cole.
Yes.
Mims.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item five, Community Comment for Items Not on the Agenda. So if anybody would like to address us about any topic that's not on the formal meeting agenda, please come forward, state your name, and take not more than five minutes to tell us what's on your mind. Good evening, Martha.
Good evening, Mr. Throgmorton. So, last Thursday night, 100 community members at least showed up to talk about climate action. So I'm here tonight, Martha Norbeck. I'm a member of the Climate Actions Steering Committee, and I saw many of our council members in attendance that evening. And it felt really great. We got lots of great comments from, from the public. We had posters up with suggested strategies about energy, and transportation, and waste management, other categories such as issues around food and land use. And the public stated their comments through putting dots in support, and also through expressing that they felt that they could actually, that they could make a difference in contributing to support those strategies. And so we're really pleased with that turnout. All the Climate Actions Steering Committee members were there, and we're going to take that information and process it, and then start to distill this down to move forward on having a really robust climate action plan. So thank you for your support on that, and thank the, to the community for showing up in such great numbers.
Thanks, Martha, and thanks to you and all the other committee members, I guess there are a total of 13, for serving on that committee. I see Ryan's out in the audience, and maybe somebody else. Anyone else? Good evening, Thomas.
Hi. So, my name's Thomas Agron. I'm a Northside resident. I also am a representative for the Northside Neighborhood Association, and I'm also the Northside representative for the Historic Preservation Commission, although I only speak tonight in the capacity as a resident of the Northside. I wanted to talk to you about the memo that you discussed during the work session tonight. I thought the conversation was really great. I think all those topics are really intertwined and related to each other, so I kind of have a lot of thoughts on each one, and I'm going to run through these as quickly as I can. I marked up my document to try and reduce as many redundancies based on what I listened to at 5:00 tonight. So, in response to the first item, which was about the Jefferson and Lynn, and Market-Lynn intersections, I just want to say that short of restoring, which would be another solution, a two-way traffic flow pattern, and an all-way stop at this intersection, which would definitely be the safest thing that you could implement, and maybe even the least costly, I think a bump-out is a really great solution across this intersection all the time, and I'm really enthusiastic about your support for that. I would ask that you do not look closely at the market bump-out as an example, since the market bump-out is just a large path, patch of concrete. You might consider what that bump-out could look like if it was a landscaped bump-out, in terms of the overall, other ancillary benefits that it could give to the neighborhood. In terms of the bike master plan conversation and the buffered bike lanes, there was some conversation, including later on, all about bike arterials and bike, or sorry, bike boulevards. There's a grid system in this part of town, and I think that there's a lot of possibility for separating and making there be automobile arterials and bike arterials on that grid system. So as an example of that would be making Ronalds an arterial for bikes, and Church an arterial for cars. So, a kind of separate system that encourages people to go their own ways, so there's less conflict, especially since, as the transportation planner pointed out, it doesn't necessarily do anything to reduce traffic speeds, which is ultimately what makes people feel safe as a cyclist. Sightlines at the intersections, I would say that especially anywhere where there is static parking, which theoretically could include all of the Northside if we change the parking requirements there, I hope that you might consider landscaped bump-outs at all of those intersections. You know, a big cost of the park, you know, maintaining the parking system in the Northside is patrolling the parking system, and bump-outs are self-enforcing. You cannot park within the sightlines if there's a bump-out there. So, that might be a strategy to consider there that would also, again, have those ancillary benefits. In regards to the traffic circles, and this was touched on a little bit as well, but I would say that the feeling as a resident based on the current traffic calming system is that we have to wait for a tragedy, or enough tragedies statistically, to make the neighborhood feel safer as a pedestrian. And just because I don't get hit by a car doesn't mean that I don't feel uncomfortable, you know, crossing streets or riding my bike, or I might not want my child to ride a bike on the street. So, I hope that if you do implement traffic circles in the Northside, which I would be a big supporter of, that you implement them in a comprehensive way, and not just as a Band-Aid solution to one bad intersection, but think about how this could change the feeling of the entire neighborhood, and how traffic behaves in the entire neighborhood. Lastly, just in, I would second tonight's comments, this was in, about the whole parking system in the Northside. I think that giving parking to ICCSD employees at Horace Mann along Church Street is an excellent idea. I really hope that you work with the school district for that, and that the, it will also provide traffic calming effects on Church, which would be great, since it's a bad school zone situation. And I would just say that I think there's another dynamic to the parking capacity in the Northside, which is that, you know, the alley that I am on right now has only two remaining backyards for that whole stretch. And one of them, which currently has four parking spots, four paved, hard-surface parking spots, they're paving over the remaining backyard right now to increase parking supply for that property. So, right now, there's parking capacity on the streets, and we're losing parking capacity in the, by, or sorry, losing backyards. So I hope that you can come up with a policy that encourages the traffic to stay on the street, and not be housed in the backyards of the houses in the Northside. At last, the last, last thing I'll say is that I was just in Montreal, and I was really floored by their forward-thinking and comprehensive traffic calming measures that they were, were either installed or underway. One of the biggest things was bump-outs at every single intersection, and also four-way stops at every single intersection in these residential areas as well, rather than a basket weave system, which is what we have. Ultimately, it felt like a very, very safe place to walk, and I hope that, I look forward, especially based on the conversation that I heard tonight, of the council really having a strong hand to forge policy that, you know, we don't have to reinvent the wheel on these things, and I'm excited to see what you guys can implement for our whole, the whole street system in Iowa City. So, thank you very much.
Thanks, Thomas. Good evening, Anna. Good evening, Anna.
Good evening, sir. How are you? Haven't seen you in a while.
I know.
Aren't you glad?
No, it's nice, it was great to see you.
Well, I'm in a bus. I live at 525 West Benton Street, and I have to tell you all, it's been a wonderfully interesting year this year. Getting home has been a challenge many times. Between Miller being closed, Benton being closed, it's sort of, how do you get there from here? I do have one issue with the fact that when construction's going on, that when the driveways are going to be blocked, it would really be nice had we been notified. We've had to drive through yards to get out of some driveways, which is never fun. It's been, I mean, I have to say, I am glad that Benton Street is finally done. It's, even though they totally ripped up my front yard, they did hit a gas line twice, that was exciting. The neighborhood, having someone on your door dressed like that, say, "You have to get out of here because we have a gas leak." They handled it beautifully, nothing happened. Mid-America came out, fixed everything, that was taken care of. But I do have a complaint. I invite all of you to drive down Miller Avenue. And as you're driving from Benton to Highway 1, I'd like to have you drive slow and look to the right, where your lovely city park is growing an abundance of weeds that are five and six feet tall. Now, if those weeds were in my yard, the city would be all over me. In fact, next year, maybe I'll let my yard go natural just to, because I don't have to do anything with it. We've called, all of my tenants have called repeatedly about getting something done about it, and nothing has been done about it. So, I am in hopes that you will all go and look at it, and see what it looks like, and see how you'd like to live across the street from that. I tried really hard to keep my stuff pretty well cleaned up, and with that across the street, I have a couple tenants that have allergy issues, and it's been a problem for them. So anything that you could do, you know, again, it's roll the dice on when Miller Avenue is closed and open. It's been a real challenge, but I'm sure that when that project is done, it'll be okay. So, I thank you. I invite you to come down Miller Avenue. Stop by at my house anytime, I can complain about lots of things. So, thanks again.
Thanks for bringing it to our attention, Anna. Jeff, could you make sure someone goes out and takes?
It's already in the works.
Yeah, okay. Anyone else? Good evening, Carolyn.
Hi. Hmm, I think somebody nabbed over here, it is. Caroline Dieterly, Walnut Street. And I know I've talked to the council before, but it's been a while, and it fell on totally deaf ears, so I'll, I'll try again. Especially since we're now encouraged to compost by putting, you know, kitchen waste in with yard waste. And I'm thinking that while you're rethinking what to do about yard waste, and pickups, and, you know, all of that, that I'm wondering whether there's any possibility that you would consider getting smaller refuse cans for people who don't, you know, generate very much refuse, because those great big green things are ridiculous. I could leave, I could not empty, empty the thing in the entire winter, and it still probably wouldn't be full, because about all I put out there is waste from the cat, and that's about it, because most everything, I try to buy things that will recycle, the containers will recycle, and I have my own compost pile in the backyard for my garden. And so, it's a big pain to try to find a place to put this huge behemoth, and I think there probably are other people like me who really don't need the really big thing. And I am still mystified as to what people are using to do the waste that is yard waste plus compost, just out of curiosity, because are you using, are people using regular waste cans that they then put stickers on? Because it seems to me that, why can't we put a sticker on these great big green things, and convince, you know, make them into what people are supposed to put yard waste into? Because the size of a can that you can buy at Paul's or Menard's or somewhere, and stick a sticker on, is really not very adequate for somebody that has serious amounts of yard waste. And it just seems to me that the proportions are wrong, that there ought to be something for the absolute junk, and an easier way to recycle. And the other thing is, is that I have become very conscious of hazardous waste, toxic waste. And try as one might, you still are going to have batteries that no longer function. And if it isn't an alkaline battery, you aren't supposed to put those into the landfill. And things like cans of stuff for the garden, even if it's an organic pesticide, it still is a lot to dump into the waste stream, because either reason it is, you know, a pesticide is, even if it's an organically based one, like pyrethrin, you know, you really don't want to be dumping that in your waste can. And it seems to me that it would be nice if you could designate even one day a week at the east side recycling and the landfill, where people could just drive in on that particular day and get rid of their toxic waste, rather than having to call in and make an appointment to come and get rid of it. I think it, it makes it harder for people to do it, and I think only the most conscientious people are careful about that. The other ones are going to be lazy and just pitch it in the trash can, and, you know, the devil take the hindmost. And, you know, considering that even with a liner in the, in the landfill, it's not 100% leak-proof, and when we're talking about water quality in Iowa, and the burgeoning population of this area, there's an awful lot of toxic waste, I think, that shouldn't go into the landfill, it finds its way in there. And it should be made easier for people to dispose of it in a responsible way. Thanks.
Thank you, Caroline. Jeff, I hope you actually took note of that. I think I'd be curious to hear a response, or read a response, by your own. All right, seeing no one else, we'll move on to item six, Planning and Zoning Matters. Let's see. Item 6A, Riverfront Crossing Setbacks and Minimum Building Height. This is an ordinance amending Title 14, Chapter 2, Article G, Riverfront Crossings Form-Based Development Standards to Allow Minor Adjustments to Upper Floor Step Back Requirements and the Minimum Building Height Standard. I want to open a public hearing. Good evening, John.
Good evening.
Good evening, John Yap, Development Services. What this proposal would do was, would be a code amendment to the Form-Based Code to allow for minor adjustments for facade step backs, which is when a building in the upper floors steps back 10 feet, so the remaining building is stepped back. It would add language to make it clear that if a waiver of the step-back requirement is granted, there must be an alternative design solution proposed that visually breaks up the vertical plane of the building, which is the intent of the step-back. It would add language to the approval criteria for building a parking placement that allows for requests in unique, in situations where there are unique characteristics of the site or neighboring properties that lend to an alternative design approach. In other words, it allows for a little more flexibility in when and how that step-back is administered. The project that instigated this, this code amendment request is the Hieronymus Square Project, which council reviewed, it was either at the last meeting or two, two meetings ago. Seven-story building with a courtyard in between and then another seven-story building. Under the current code, above the fifth story, there would be a step-back required along both the Burlington Street and Clinton Street facades. What the applicant has, has proposed as a design alternative, which is, I don't have an image of it yet, but is to add more glass above the fifth story.
John, can I, can I interrupt you just for a second? Do you have a light dimmer up there, the little white switch, is that?
Oh, I do.
Look at that.
Thank you.
It's usually with the clerk. Can everyone see that better? Okay. So it's a seven-story building, separated, two seven-story structures separated by a courtyard. Normally, there would be a step-back required both along the Burlington Street and the Clinton Street facades. In this case, and I, and again, I don't have an image of it yet, but what the, the applicant has proposed is to add a lot more glass to those top two stories to minimize the appearance of the height in lieu of stepping back those floors. Just some other images, this one compared to the music school across the street. The other part of this code amendment, in this district, there's a two-story minimum height. What the other part of this code amendment would do, would be to allow for a two-story facade, which is depicted here, this would be fronting on Clinton Street. Behind this facade is, is a courtyard, not a two-story building, but it does give the appearance, the experience of a two-story building walking across the street. And just another image of that with, again, with the separation between those two buildings.
And John, the building on the right would have to have, ordinarily would have to have a, a step-back also?
That's correct.
Above the fifth?
On the, on the Clinton Street facade.
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. Both Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval. Be glad to take any questions.
Can, can you briefly summarize the, the way the commission processed this? I know they deferred their first vote on it and asked questions and got information back and so on.
I think the, yeah, the commission, and the minutes are in your packet, but the commission's concern was that there be a bona fide alternative proposed to what the step-back is trying to accomplish. What the step-back is trying to accomplish is a more pedestrian-oriented facade along the street by stepping back the upper stories so that as a pedestrian, you do not experience the, the tall buildings walking, walking down the street. You might have a three or four-story facade that you're experiencing, the, the taller part of the building would be step-back. I think the concern of the commission was that step-backs not be waived indiscriminately and that there be a bona fide alternative solution proposed depending on the context of the site.
Okay, and they, they recommended approval unanimously, right?
Yes.
Okay, any questions for John?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Would anybody else like to address this topic? All right, I don't see anyone else, so are you folks inclined to vote in accord with the commission? Yeah, okay. I'm going to close the public hearing.
First consideration.
Second. Moved by Botchway, seconded by Thomas. Discussion.
I think this, this seems like a reasonable response and it was triggered by a project that we reviewed and approved. And I certainly think in this instance, it wasn't necessary, in some respects, I would say architecturally even counterproductive, to have had the step-back. So I think the notion of articulating the building wall is a more flexible approach to the, to the problem.
Especially given the height of the building. I mean, if it was, you know, a 12-story building, it would make a big difference, but, yeah. Anything else? Okay, hearing none, further discussion. Roll call, please.
Cole?
Yes.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 6B, Regulation of Sale of Fireworks. This is an ordinance amending Title Four, oh, did I skip something I might have? Let me see. I was thinking maybe there was correspondence. Ordinance amending Title 14, Zoning, Chapter 4, Use Regulations and Article 14D2, Industrial and Research Zones, to restrict, restrict sales of consumer fireworks to industrial zones. Open the public hearing. John?
State legislation enacted earlier this year allows for the sale of consumer fireworks at certain times of the year, both in June through July 4th and then in December through New Year's Eve. While local jurisdictions are still allowed to restrict the use of fireworks in communities, jurisdictions are not allowed to prohibit the sales of such fireworks. This year, Iowa City treated fireworks like any other retail item. Allowed for their sale within brick-and-mortar stores and allowed for their sale within tents, temporary-use tents, similar to garden, garden supplies tents that, that are approved every The council has discussed this item earlier this, this summer, and one of the issues that, that the city experienced, I think, is the impulse purchase of fireworks. At the grocery store, at the lumberyard, they were very available, which led to a high amount of illegal use within the city. So what is proposed, as has been done in some other cities in Iowa, is to restrict fireworks sales to industrial zones. I don't, I don't have any images for you, but there are two main industrial zones in Iowa City. One on the north side of Highway 6, on the, on the east side of the city, and the other on the, along Highway 218 on the south side of the city, south of the airport. Those are the two main industrial zones in Iowa City. What this ordinance would do is restrict sales of consumer fireworks to those industrial zones. Be glad to take any questions.
Okay, good deal. Any questions for John?
Thank you.
Anybody else like to address this topic? Don't be shy. Okay, seeing no one else, any discussion? Oh, I have to close the public hearing, I'm sorry, and I have to ask a question. So, are you inclined to support the commission's recommendation? Yep, okay, so, I'll close the public hearing.
First consideration.
Second.
I'm trying to close this discussion. So, moved by Botchway, seconded by Mims. Discussion.
I'm just glad to see us tightening this up. I think what happened last year was just too many problems within the community, too easily accessible. Some people certainly not knowing that they were illegal in town since they could buy them, and I think this limitation hopefully will help us considerably.
I would agree, I'd be interested in the feedback we get back from folks as far as that change, but, yeah, I would agree, I think this is a nice step.
I agree too, and I was glad to see information in there about the signage and requiring larger signs, bigger signs, because what we heard was, well, we didn't know that, but even though the information was out there, so I'm very much in favor of this change.
Right. I guess I did have a question, because Chief Mather is here. Does that change in enforcement? Because I know we were looking at it kind of from a warning standpoint this last year because it was relatively new in conjunction with the law passing, but now I feel pretty confident that people are aware or upset, so.
Yeah, our phones really blew up, no pun intended, on the fireworks. We certainly have to get a better approach, so directed patrols, increased enforcement, but also more education, better signage, you know, relocation of the, the sales itself. We take a holistic approach at this, I'm certain that we'll get a better grasp on it. We tried to find a good balance with the new state law. We weren't alone statewide, there was issues. Statewide, there's jurisdictions that allowed fireworks and now they're saying no more. So it's a learning phase for everybody, including the consumers and, and law enforcement and, and the communities, but you'll see improvements.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 6C, Cardinal Point West, Part 2. This is an ordinance conditionally rezoning 28.303 acres from Interim Development Research Park, ID RAP, zone to high-density, single-family residential, RS12 Zone for 5.35 acres, low-density multifamily, RM12 Zone for 3.3 acres, and rural residential, RR1 Zone for 19.38 acres for property located west of Camp Cardinal Road and south of Kennedy Parkway. This is second consideration. Is there any need for ex parte disclosures? Yeah, me neither, okay.
Move second consideration.
Second.
Moved by Mims, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. I, I want to say I went out to the intersection, this has only peripheral connection to the rezoning itself, but I went out to the intersection of Kennedy and, and Camp Cardinal, I don't know, after our last meeting, and went to the west side of Kennedy, on the west side of Camp Cardinal Road, and then came back to the intersection and realized that trying to enter onto Kennedy, enter onto Camp Cardinal Road was very dangerous. And it was because the traffic was moving well above the speed limit and because when I looked to the north, that is, to the left from where I was waiting, I couldn't see high-speed vehicles coming up the hill. And there were some other cars across the street at the stop sign on the other side waiting. I think there's a stop sign there, yeah, but they were waiting. And it all seemed very dicey trying to get out on that road. So there are some things wrong out there. The traffic's too fast, going too fast, and the fact that there's no controlled intersection makes it even doubly dangerous. So I read the memo in our packet and frankly, it doesn't go far enough from my point of view. I, I think that needs to be rethought. As far as the rezoning is concerned, I don't have any problem with the rezoning.
I, I looked the, I didn't go out to the intersection, but I looked at it online and it's a massive intersection. Really promotes through traffic along Camp Cardinal as you approach at the intersection, whether you're north or southbound, you have turn lane options in both directions, so it, even though it's only a two-lane road, there's lots of lanes there that widen the intersection. And you combine that with the 35, 35 mile per hour speed limit, and also their wide radii, I think they're 50 feet. So we talk a lot about sort of the travel experience on the roadway itself, this is an intersection design issue, and, yeah, I, I would have to agree with Jim. I'm, I'm wondering if perhaps it was designed more in alignment with the previous zone of industrial research, I, I don't know, you know, without the anticipation of residential on the west side, but now that it's going residential, I, I think we do need to look at it more carefully.
I'm pleased with the rezoning and the fact that it'll be a nice mix of types of housing, that's, that's something that we really need, rather than so many apartments or so many expensive, single-family. But I drive that road a lot and people do go too fast and all of a sudden they get to the Correville section, and it's 25. There was mention in, in this material about the school zone and the possibility of, of adding a zone on Camp Cardinal, because I had a question for the chief, I don't know if he can answer that. How close to the school does the school zone need to be? Up, up near Borlaug is a school zone, 20 miles, but continuing on Camp Cardinal, just a block away, is the 35. And, and there are going to be children crossing there, and there's only a sidewalk on, on the east side of Camp Cardinal, not on the west side.
I don't think there's any.
Chief, could you come up, please?
I don't know of any specific feet that we have to be within the schools, I think the city can, I believe, can set that school zone according to what area needs to be slowed down, so there shouldn't be a problem if it needs to be moved further out. Is that, is that your question?
Okay, yeah, thank you.
I'll tell you what it felt like to me when I was out there. It felt like people are using that, using Camp Cardinal as an alternative interstate highway. They were driving way too fast and many of the vehicles were large construction trucks, and the whole thing just struck me as pretty darn dangerous.
Yeah, that, that design seems conducive to that, and that we need probably to get some speed trailers out there and do some enforcement as well.
Also, not to mention the fact that a lot of deer, I've seen deer alongside the road many times.
Jeff, I mean, Jim talked about it, I think numerous counselors have talked about it as well, what's the process by which we look at, you know, a little bit more. I mean, obviously, we don't expect to have something back with their consideration, but, I mean, this is separate from the rezoning, but.
Well, we, we have to look at what we can control. This intersection's a little bit unique in that it's, it's a joint jurisdiction with the city of Correville, so we'll need to sit down and have some discussions with them and see what, what their interest is, but also look at what we can control in the short term, and that's enforcement, that's signage. We have a, a street tree planting project in this corridor in the Iowa City portion come spring, our staff is designing that right now, so we're going to try to make some improvements to the, the built environment to, to give some visual cues to slow down as well, but ultimately, if we want to signalize the intersection or put some, some control measures in, we'll need to coordinate that with the city of Correville, and I would expect that there'd be a cost share in that type of improvement.
I just want to echo what Pauline had said. I think once again, we see an example of, I think, the developer, our staff, and our plan, I think, really getting a nice mix of density, and we just continually see that. So that really means we have a great plan in place, that I think our staff is getting it right and the developers are getting it right. Nine single-family lots, six dual potlucks, and one multifamily. It's a nice mix of housing, so I think, once again, kudos to the staff and the developer for getting that right.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mims?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item 7, Burlington-Clinton Street Intersection Improvements. This is a resolution approving plans, specifications, form of agreement, and estimate of cost for the construction of the Burlington-Clinton Street Intersection Improvements Project, establishing amount of bid security to accompany each bid, directing city clerk to post notice to bidders, and fixing time and place for receipt of bids. I'll open the public hearing. Good evening, Ron.
Ron Kentucky Public Works Director. This, this project is rebidding, a project that we tried to bid earlier this year that we had no bids on. So this will be the four-lane to three-lane conversion from Court Street to Market Street on Clinton, and then also bike lanes from Benton Street up to Church. So we'll have some water main work that'll go in with this, but it will help a lot at the Clinton and Burlington intersection by adding a dedicated turn lane there, left
Thanks, Ron. I'm guessing no one wanted to ask Ron questions? No?
Yeah.
Anyone else?
[laughing]
All right. Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing.
Move for resolution?
Second.
Moved by Batsway, seconded by Thomas. Discussion. I'm looking forward to seeing this being done.
This will be our first four to three downtown, correct? Am I wrong on that?
I think that's right. Correct.
So I'm really excited to see this project happen.
Yep.
So I've expressed my concerns. I haven't, I mean, outside of us talking about it, I haven't necessarily heard positive feedback. So we'll see.
I'm concerned with this one Kingsley more than some of the others because of all the bus traffic on Clinton. So.
Further discussion? Hearing non-roll call.
Taylor?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throg Morton?
Yes.
Batsway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Ma'am's?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Item eight, Revised TIF Policies. This is a resolution adopting city of Iowa City tax increment financing, TIF policies. There's no requirement to hold a public hearing, but we do solicit public input on this topic. We're going to begin with Wendy Ford from our staff, providing some background and substance about what's being proposed and the process by which we got here. Good evening, Wendy.
Good evening, council. Thank you. I'm Wendy Ford, Economic Development Coordinator. And I want to go over the proposed tax increment financing policies that you all have been working on, or at least the Economic Development Committee has been working on for what has been almost two years. Early in 2016, you set out to review the policies with the goal of establishing a set of policies that provide both a balance of specificity and flexibility for our development community. And to back up for just a moment, we're talking about the use of tax increment financing, or those property taxes generated by a development that you have the option of using towards furthering that development or furthering other public projects. So your review of those policies then was an effort to make it clear for the entire community what you expect of developers and what your values are. So we started early on in 2016 with a series of, I think we ended up having nine focus groups, different groups of people with different types of expertise and interests. We had, obviously, we had developers, architects, engineers, people with a strong interest and expertise in sustainability, historic preservation, arts organizations, and social organizations. We really spent a long time getting input from these various groups before the Economic Development Committee set forth to really refine the policies. So I'd like to go over the policies. There are eight of them. I'd like to go over those policies with you and then perhaps answer any questions. I did bring the desired heights map that will come up in conversation in the downtown building heights and character section of this. But first, we'll start with sustainability. The proposed policy is that any TIF project in any urban renewal area in Iowa City be required to be LEED Silver certified. Additionally, that project should achieve eight energy efficiency credits, and that would be for any new residential, office, or mixed-use building. If you have questions, I suppose you could jump in to at our point like you had done earlier. But otherwise, I'll just move on to the second point, and that is building, downtown building heights and character. The recommended policy is that any TIF development should adhere to the, and fulfill the vision of the Riverfront Crossings Master Plan, which was adopted into the comp plan for Iowa City. I believe that was in 2011 or 2012. And in that plan, there was a set of desired heights that were published as well. And you also, desired TIF projects adhere to the recommended heights in that desired heights map. And that if a project wanted to deviate from that, that is, be higher, or I suppose an alternative would be lower, they would need, the developer would need to show why. What additional public benefit would they be bringing to the project to merit deviating from the building heights, desired building heights map? And if I may, Mayor Throg Morton and the Economic Development Committee agreed that there were five ideas for exceeding public benefits that could work. So to give you an idea, and this is not an exclusive list of the kinds of additional or exceedingly good public benefits project could bring to merit having a building be taller than the desired height map. One would be a very innovative building design that would produce affordable housing and/or affordable retail spaces for Iowa businesses, for local businesses, I should say. Secondly, would be to create an attractive public space that was accessible to all. Thirdly, an idea was that if the project would provide good job opportunities for low-income youth, it might be, it might merit exceeding that desired heights. If the project could be carbon neutral or achieve a higher yet LEED certification, there is gold and platinum above the silver that would already be required. That, too, could merit consideration of a higher building. And then finally, on the list of ideas for ways you could achieve a higher building, would be to somehow work in a public display of paintings, photographs, sculpture, some sort of cultural exhibit that would express how the diverse groups of people who live and have helped Iowa City become Iowa City have done that. Something to celebrate the unique character of Iowa City. So the committee spent a long time talking about the additional public benefits that would be required to merit exceeding that desired height map. So I'll just move on if there's no questions. The third component to the new policy revolves around historic preservation. And I might say at this point that our policies to date actually, in the downtown area, have protected historic preservation. And this policy essentially restates that and clarifies that some. So new construction that would require demolition of a registered, a key property, or a property that was eligible to be registered on the National Register of Historic Places would not be eligible for TIF in these proposed policies. And it wasn't eligible, wouldn't have been eligible either before. If there is to be rehab done on a building, then it must be done to preserve or restore historic structure to productive use. And that would be a building that would be registered, a key, or eligible to be registered as well. Additions to buildings that are in one of those same three categories, registered, key, or eligible to be registered, would need to be architecturally compatible with the existing building, not only the building, but the entire block. Fourthly, historic preservation projects may be eligible for TIF via a district-wide TIF. And that is an important component to this because, to date, we have used project-based tax increment financing. That is, the project would have to, has had to create enough of its own increase in value, its own self, by the improvements, to pay for the improvements to that building. Because often, that is not possible with a historic preservation type of project. And that's because the costs of historic preservation are, don't merit the increase in value as new buildings do. We would look to the entire district's increment to be able to help with a project because of the importance of historic preservation. And I can maybe say that a little clearer if you need me to. And then lastly, with regards to historic preservation, there are several categories of historic buildings. We mentioned the registered on the National Historic, a key building is a special designation in Iowa City that can't be touched here, and the eligible to be registered on historic, and the register of historic places is a third. A fourth is contributing, excuse me, contributing properties. And those are projects that may be eligible for TIF. But any project involving a contributing property would have to somehow enhance the historic preservation of the rest of the block, the rest of the neighborhood downtown. And there is a definition for contributing property. And we had a lot of discussion around this, just trying to learn the definition of contributing. And I'll share that with you. It is property that adds to the historical integrity or architectural qualities that make a local or a national historic district significant. So there are a number of contributing buildings downtown. Moving along, we've had an affordable housing component to the proposed TIF policy since May of 2016, and I'll just go over that. It is that TIF projects in any urban renewal area, and we have 12 of those in Iowa City, with a residential component, must provide a minimum of 15% of the units that are built as part of the development as affordable to tenants at or below 60% of the area median income. The city can also require that that threshold be lower, but the policy as it is stated has 60%. If those affordable units are built for sale, in other words, if a developer is coming in and going to be putting, building condos that will be for sale, and they're affordable, and in meeting their affordability requirement, are going to be selling those, they must sell them to people who are at no higher than, who are at or above 110% of, sorry, at or below 110% of the area median income. There are a couple of alternatives as well to providing affordable housing if you are receiving tax increment financing. And one is to pay a fee in lieu of providing those 15% onsite. And that may be a necessity due to perhaps the size of the property or other constraints there might be. Another might be to provide the affordable housing in a site that is elsewhere, offsite. And either of those alternatives would be at the sole discretion of the city. So there would be a lot of discussion around why developer would not be able to provide those onsite. And I thought I would just review that in Riverfront Crossings District, you know, there's already a requirement that 10% of the residential units in a development be provided as affordable just for being in that district. That was a, that was a requirement that was put on when Riverfront Crossings allowed for an increase in density. Well, if a residential project in Riverfront Crossings is also receiving TIF, then their requirement is to provide 15% of the residential units as affordable. And above that, the part of the financial gap that would be covered by TIF or considered by TIF is only the part above that first required 10% by zoning. Moving on to social justice, we, the committee discussed that there would be absolutely no incentives to any entity that was involved in wage theft. And that also had been a policy since sometime in 2016, I bet. And then agreements for any incentives must include the construction contract for the construction of the building. And there are several components that would be required to be proven in that contract. And I won't read those over. It's getting a little late. But I'm sure Eleanor might be able to help answer questions with regards to the construction contract aspects of the TIF policy there. We have a quality jobs section. And this part of the TIF policy is actually reflective of the State of Iowa's High Quality Jobs Act, where if the state is considering helping a project that says, we need help with this project because we're bringing a lot of great jobs to the community, they must meet a certain threshold. And that is a wage rate to be considered eligible for those state funds. Well, the same would go for the TIF policy in Iowa City, that if you were saying, because I'm bringing 50 fantastic jobs to Iowa City, I and my company deserve TIF, then we're going to hold you, one of the things we're going to hold you to would be that wage threshold. For TIF, moving on to number seven, other public interests. TIF, it was deemed that TIF could be a good tool to help us build what is so special and unique about Iowa City. And in part, that has to do with our arts and cultural activities and the facilities that house those. We wanted to, the committee wanted to make sure that because TIF is generated by the projects that have high value, and there's much benefit to the community to be had from those, that the arts and cultural organizations might find a way to benefit from that as well. So the committee wrote this in. Likewise, historic preservation, we mentioned that before in the historic preservation section, and also public improvements that serve as a catalyst for economic development of an area. And the one I can think of would be the Riverfront Crossings Park. And the new value that is being created right now around the edges of Riverfront Crossings Park could be, if the city were to decide to use it, that new value could be used to help pay for some of the improvements in that park. And thus, serving as a catalyst or generating further and more interest in developing that area. And then lastly, to be considered for tax increment financing, we have, we have an underwriting policy that includes submitting a complete application from the very beginning. And within that application, substantiating why you, as a developer, would not be able to do this project if it weren't for TIF. And we've often called that the "but for" clause. Got to come up with a better name for that. But it essentially says that but for the city's assistance with public financing, we would not be able to go forward with this project. And that also requires that all other financial pieces of that project be in place for us to consider that. Also, another feature of this is that the developer equity be at least as much or more than the request of TIF. So we're asking for at least as much skin in the game as you might be getting back from your city to do your project. And in general, that our tax increment financing projects be project-based. And I had talked about the difference a few minutes ago about project-based TIF, where the new improvement of the one building being built, the new value, I should say, generates enough property tax increase to help with the city's participation in that. That's a project-based TIF as opposed to a district-wide TIF, where we might say, for instance, let's talk about all the increment in, say, downtown and use that for some public project. That would be a district-wide TIF as opposed to a project-based TIF. So those are the eight points and the recommended policies that the Economic Development Committee approved two to one on October 19. And I would be happy to answer any questions. Or if you wanted to skip to the desired height map, I would be happy to do that as well.
Are there any questions for Wendy about what she's discussed so far? You want to jump to the map? You want to jump to the map?
Questions or discussion?
Just pointing it out to us, right? This is the desired height map that appears in the downtown Riverfront Crossings plan, right?
Yep.
Page 106, if I remember correctly?
Exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Wendy. Would anybody else like to address this topic?
Before we do that, Jim, just as a point of reference, this is not a regular, this is not a public hearing. Normally, we get the motion on the floor first, and I think it's important to let people know that at our work session tonight, while we did not vote, I believe the consensus at the work session is that we are in fact going to defer this. I think it's important for people to know that. That may impact what people want to say tonight versus what they might want to say at our next meeting.
Fair enough, sure. So yeah, during the work session, I recommended that we defer a vote on this particular topic to our November 21, 21st meeting. But we want to solicit input tonight, hear what you all have to say, then we'll have discussion, but we're not going to vote. We're going to defer action to the November 21st meeting.
And we will take input on the 21st as well, correct?
Correct. Good evening, Bill.
Hey, good evening.
Yeah, we can't talk about the stuff you and I talked about before.
Yes. I'm Bill Gerhardt. I live in Iowa City. I'm the president of Iowa State Building Trades. And I think I was part of at least one focus group, and I know a lot of work went into this TIF proposal. But I think deferring it until the next meeting is a great idea. It gives a lot of the stakeholders one more chance to look things over. And I appreciate you considering that. So thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Kim Casco, president and CEO of the Iowa City Area Chamber of Commerce, and I second Bill's comment. We definitely support a delay of the vote until the next meeting on November 21st. Again, it'll allow the key stakeholder groups more time to review this latest draft, present concerns, alternate proposals, and hopefully work towards consensus. Thank you.
Martha again.
Hi, my name is Martha Norbeck, and I'm speaking to you now as a architect who has facilitated LEED certification on 29 projects as of today. The Dental Science Building, Phase Two, just got gold certification today. So that's exciting. So I am very familiar with the ins and outs of LEED, and I am pleased to see LEED on the table as a discussion item. I want to address some comments I have heard in the ether, some directly, some indirectly, about some confusion about LEED. So one thing that came up with the approval of the Huronimus Square project for that TIF was, "Oh, well, they're doing green seal gold certification for hotels." That is fantastic. But I will tell you that it is not the same as LEED. It does not give you the same value as LEED. The green seal standard for hotels was established to help existing hotels primarily develop operation standards that are more green. And if you read through the details of that, which of course I did, because I'm obsessed about these things, and so I read through the whole shebang, and the nuance is that they applaud you getting LEED certification, they applaud higher energy efficiency standards, but you can actually get green seal gold with meh energy performance. All they really require is that you have to measure it and keep track of it and at least strive to improve it, which means you could build a building that just barely meets the energy code and still get green seal gold. So although that is a fantastic program, especially for a hotel, and there's all sorts of merits to pursuing that, it's not the same as LEED. The value of LEED is that it is comprehensive in multiple categories of green performance. So you're not just looking at energy, because carbon isn't only through, an issue through how we actually operate our buildings, it has to do with where they are. It has to do with how we treat the landscape. It has to do with how we manage our water. Water usage, 70% of the cost of our water actually is paying for the pumps to move it around. So saving water actually saves energy. How we get our materials and make our materials, what they're made out of, those have carbon impacts. So all these things have climate impacts. And then there's the people in the buildings. And so LEED is addressing the welfare of the people actually in the buildings. Because if we're not happy and healthy and productive, how are we going to go out there and address climate action? Because we won't have the energy to do it because we're too tired from the crappy air in our spaces. So better indoor air quality is going to yield better results for people at large. And that's why LEED is valuable, is because of that comprehensive view. And the reason why the eight energy efficiency points came on the table is because if you look at the average energy performance of buildings that go through the Mid-American Energy Efficiency Program for commercial new construction, that average performance over time has been 30% for all projects. And so the eight energy efficiency credits are for 20%. So we're not even saying you have to be average. We just want you to get like, you know, kind of in the direction of average. So by setting that threshold, we're sending a signal that it's important to care about the performance of the building, that the city is committed to climate action. And that's the purpose. And then I want to address cost, because cost is, people throw out crazy numbers. There's all sorts of rumors. But study after study after study has been done, and you should be able to get a LEED certified building for the same construction cost as a non-LEED certified building. There are some additional soft costs, so they're looking at half a percent to 1% premium on average for buildings. Anybody can screw up a budget and balloon costs, and then you've got these outliers that make things sound crazy. We've all got exceptional stories. But I've done project after project where we have drilled down and taken opportunities to get savings, to basically pay for some of these extra things, like commissioning, which is basically having a third-party person come in and check out and make sure your building's operating the way you intended it to operate. So LEED is a really valuable thing. And one part of LEED that I think really gets to this map that I think is important is that we do want density downtown. We want people downtown, living and working and playing. We want that diversity. I'm not convinced that this map is the right tool to convey that. I don't know what the problem we've all been having in these discussions is. What is? I don't know. One of the options that's been thrown on the table is pursuing discussions about Form Data Space Code being adopted downtown, and that may be a good direction to go. But what I'm excited about is these conversations that have been going on between stakeholders in the last few weeks, trying to hash out amongst ourselves, like, how can we come to a happy resolution and move forward on this? So I'm very enthusiastic about those conversations that are happening. And I know that you guys have struggled a great deal with how to express this and how to make the building heights conveyed in a way that satisfies many people. And I would hate to see all these other seven principles be sidelined as a result of this map. So I'm hoping in these next few weeks, we can come up with some great ideas. So thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Good evening, Nancy.
Nancy Bird with the Iowa City Downtown District. I had some things prepared, but I'm just going to go with Martha just said and just leave it at that. So thank you very much.
What she said. Okay, seeing no one else, I think we now will have a discussion. Now, remember, we're not voting after this discussion. We'll have a motion to defer.
I'll move to defer.
Second.
Going to do it that way?
Yep, the way we normally do it.
All right. Move by MEMS, second, and by Botchway, well, defer.
Till the 21st.
And subsequently, we will have discussion tonight.
That's fine.
Yeah. Okay. Motion, motion's made by Botchway, second, no, by MEMS, second by Botchway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Or do we have to do roll call? Yeah. Aye, motion carries. Okay. So discussion, I want to say a few opening things and hear what the rest of you say about various elements. I am tremendously proud about the process we followed in generating the proposed amendments. Also curious to see what might come out of the discussions that Martha and Nancy just alluded to. This may well be the most expensive, no, I'm sorry, the most extensive and transparent effort in devising a policy that any Iowa City City Council has ever undertaken. First, the Economic Development Committee has been working on proposed revisions for about 15 months. Secondly, the staff conducted extensive focus group interviews with nine different types of stakeholders totaling somewhere around 65 individuals, some of whom are in the room. Third, influenced by the information collected during these focus groups, the Economic Development Committee, with terrific staff assistance, began crafting policy amendments roughly eight months ago. Fourth, in seven meetings over that eight-month period, the committee proposed and refined amendments, considered written commentary received from diverse stakeholders, debated various detailed modifications, and finally, on October 19th, recommended approval of the amendments before us. And last, all of the committee's meetings were held in these chambers, were televised live on Cable Channel 4, and were available for streaming on our cable, on our, you know, website as well later on, by anybody who wanted to view what was going on during these meetings. I'm tremendously proud of that. It's very visible, very transparent, and we have listened to a lot of people and read a lot of commentary and had a lot of extensive consultation and debate. I'm not going to say anything about the substance at the moment, maybe other people want to weigh in on particular elements, and then we can continue having our discussion.
Well, I would like to second, Jim, your comments. You know, the process was as extensive as anything certainly I've seen since I've been in Iowa City. And I appreciate all the involvement in the community as well. I mean, this was really trying to capture the complexity of questions of how do we move forward in the downtown? So I really appreciate that, and I think, you know, we as council are now faced with trying to make sense out of all of these points of view that are diverse, that weigh things differently. So I think it's a good example of what may end up being kind of, you know, politics is about finding compromise, finding a middle ground, some piece of ground that everyone can feel some level of ownership with. At least that's the way I'm looking at it at this point.
Well, I want to echo Jim's comments. Before we talk about some of the disagreements that we had in the committee, I think the one thing that I really want to identify is the agreement that we have. We essentially had eight different areas, and seven of the eight, we really had broad consensus on, so I'm very pleased with that. And then we have a difference over heights, and I think I know that that's been a big issue for the community. I think the key issue we have to really understand, though, is that it's not only downtown stakeholders that should have input, it really needs to be the community as a whole. This is a place that we all really love. The whole state of Iowa loves our downtown. And I think we need to proceed very carefully before we make significant changes. And I think what this map does is, is this really identifies a point of shared consensus to start with. I think one of the things that came up in our meetings during the Economic Development Committee is to say that this map can never be changed. I don't think certainly was my intention. But this is a starting point for consensus. The last time the community has really weighed in in a comprehensive fashion was in generating this map. And as I look at it, there are parts of it maybe that could be tweaked here and there. And the other thing to keep in mind is this is not a regulatory code. This is a starting point, which can be deviated if there are extraordinary public benefits. So I'm hoping that from this point till the 21st of November, that we can come through and identify, you know, some, if there are some improvements you can come up with, let us know, engage us. We're here to serve you and to listen to you. So I hope that you'll do that over these next two weeks and give any one of the councilors a call and give us feedback directly, because that's what our role and that's what our responsibility is.
So I'll say two things before I guess we go into deeper discussion. I'm not, I guess, sure on that from a process standpoint, but, so I agree, I appreciate you kind of starting with that, Jim, because I think that, you know, I would agree from a deliberative process standpoint, there's been an extensive amount of time with discussions and such. I also just appreciate the articulation, kind of going through, you know, the months and the meetings, because I think that's important for, as we move forward. I would say just in general, from, you know, Ms. Ford's kind of just discussion and analysis, I do think it helps with some clarity, because I know that some of the concerns that I've received and just been thinking about how we've deliberated over projects when they've involved TIF financing, it's been tough, because I think that, you know, I have my own kind of, you know, metrics or decision-making that I go through in a process. And I think this provides some greater clarity to all our developers in regards to what exactly council will be looking for as we move forward in regards to TIF. And so I guess those are the two comments I want to make, but I just think that it's helpful from that standpoint to just have a clear message. And I think that has been the resounding feedback that I've gotten, at least that we've kind of come to this point, that we can articulate a better message from that
Anyone else?
I'll just reserve my comments for two weeks from now.
Okay. I'd like to say, make one substantive comment with regard, I mean, Rockney correctly stated that of the eight elements, the Economic Development Committee unanimously supported seven of them, with one detail having to do with LEED silver, there was, you voted for, against the idea of having LEED silver with eight energy efficiency points?
Correct.
Right. But other than that.
And the height.
Yeah, right, I was getting to that. So other than that, there was no disagreement. There is clearly with regard to the heights. So this is what I want to be clear about from my point of view on this. The proposed policy says, this is almost verbatim, but it's close enough, "Except under extraordinary circumstances, applicants seeking TIF downtown must ensure that their projects fall within the desired height ranges shown in the downtown Riverfront Crossings Master Plan," that map, "but it also provides a pathway for considering deviations from the map in that plan if the applicant demonstrates, one, that the proposed building and uses will help fulfill the overall vision of the plan by facilitating architecturally, materially, and financially the preservation and enhancement of adjacent or nearby historic structures, if applicable, and, second, that the proposed building will provide exceptional public benefits. And the policy provides, as Wendy said, clear examples of what might count as exceptional public benefits. But it also leaves creative developers with the ability to propose other exceptional public benefits that clearly help foster an inclusive, just, and sustainable city." So there's no ban, you know, on height and all that. There are pathways that could be followed, but there's steps that a developer would have to go through to make it through that pathway. So I don't think there's any need to go into other detail about this. I look forward to hearing what you folks possibly come up with in these consultations you're having on, you know, sidebar consultations, could be a great benefit. So with that, I think we can end our conversation about this. And we've already made the motion and deferred, right?
One second. Media in the back, right about it. Let's get that out there.
All right. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence, please?
So moved?
Second.
Moved by Botchway, second by MEMS. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item nine, rental permit requirements. This is an ordinance amending Title 17, entitled Building and Housing, Chapter Five, entitled Housing Code, to establish a rental permit cap and to strengthen the minimum requirements for rental housing. This is first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second. Moved by Botchway, seconded by Thomas. Discussion, so we'll start with Stan Laverman. Good evening, Stan.
Good evening, council. Stan Laverman, Senior Housing Inspector. So I'll walk you through this a little bit. So as you all know, this spring, the state removed our So as you all know, this spring, the state removed our ability to regulate occupancy in our neighborhoods based on familial status. Through much discussion and much research, this is the plan that we are putting forward at this time. Do you want to wait for questions to the end, or do you want to ask questions at the different sections, or?
Oh, let's, I don't know.
Do it by section.
Okay. So the first thing that we're proposing is...
Can you click close? I just feel weird about it, sorry.
There we go. That's a little bit better. We're talking about establishing a rental permit cap in this area, in the delineated area, the green area. So we're looking at any time that there are more than 40% of the properties in this area above that have a rental permit, that no more rental permits would be permitted. Currently, I'll go to the other map here, there are six districts that exceed the 40%, which is on the west side, Brooklyn, Roosevelt, River Crossings West, River Crossings East, Bowery, College Green, and the north side. There are certain exceptions to that cap, such as duplexes where one side is owner-occupied and the other side is rental, approved bed and breakfast home stays and ends, which would also be Airbnb-type uses, and accessory dwelling units. The boundaries were based on the open space district, which were, those districts were created in 1993 and updated in 2006. There was some discussion earlier on about different neighborhoods and the fringe neighborhoods of where they fall on this map, specifically Goose Town finds itself on the edge and included into the Hickory Hill neighborhood, and in turn, while the north side is at 58%, Goose Town would be at 30.8%. So I know there was some discussion there. Also, there was some discussion on Governor Street and how that falls in the Longfellow neighborhood, so.
Just to clarify, staff didn't have those discussions. Those are things that have come up since this came out.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you keep on going?
Moving, okay. After, we've also looked at creating a temporary rental permit under limited circumstances. You know, if you've owned the property for more than two years, or excuse, we didn't, we didn't put that in there, sorry, that we would issue a temporary rental permit for two years in situations where you were on sabbatical, military leave, or some other substantial similar reason. Essentially just creating a safety valve for situations that we could foresee where people may have to move out of a neighborhood and were having trouble selling a property or didn't want to sell a property. This would be a safety valve that would allow them to keep the property and rent it on a temporary basis. Additionally, we're looking at creating a maximum percentage of bedroom space that could be created within a dwelling. This number was derived from a study done by the National Association of Home Builders that showed that bedrooms in total account for roughly 27% of floor space irrespective of home size. So small homes, medium-sized homes, large homes, typically the bedroom size is 29%. We put a cap at 35% to give us some wiggle room, since that's an average. Again, this was to prevent de facto rooming houses from being created in our, in our single household neighborhoods. In addition, there's a minimum requirement of shared living space that would be required in each dwelling unit. For each 100 square foot of bedroom, there would be 100 square foot of shared living space. Additionally, we're looking at establishing a minimum bedroom size for rental units, and this is to discourage properties from being chopped up into very small bedrooms, eliminating living rooms, dining rooms, and we felt that 100-square-foot bedroom was a more manageable, livable bedroom size. Additionally, there's some changes that will come forward in the zoning code that will partner with this, that we'll assess with this, this part of it. Requiring interconnected smoke alarms. Currently, if you build a property, residential property, all the smoke alarms are required to be interconnected. We're proposing that if you're adding bedrooms to existing rental properties, that all the smoke alarms in the dwelling are interconnected. This is just an enhanced safety feature as you increase occupancy. Looking at requiring deadbolt locks on all dwelling unit doors. This was requested by the University of Iowa Student Government. This is also just an opportunity to increase safety in our dwelling units. Moving on, requiring a rental permit for owner-occupied dwellings with more than one tenant. Moving forward, the occupancies are changing. So currently, if you had an owner-occupied property, one person living there, you could have two rumors. Moving forward, there's going to be a possibility that you're going to have higher occupancies in some of these properties. This is just a tool that allows us to verify that these properties are being maintained in a safe manner and according to our housing code, and will allow us to verify compliance with the housing code. And then another component of it is enhanced rental permit sanctions. Currently, we look at a 12-month window for nuisance violations, disorderly house, disorderly conduct type charges, alcohol-related charges out of property. We're looking at expanding that out to 24 months. Additionally, in our code, we had a provision that said we would look at other nuisance complaints related to a property, related to parking on the grass, not shoveling the walk, not mowing the grass. We're going to be looking at the property for a 24-month period now, as opposed to a 12-month period. So again, where you have properties that, they're not well-managed, they will come into our purview a little bit closer and give us a little more authority to require a property maintenance program of some sort to help them fit into the neighborhood. At one time, we had a spacing requirement, or we were looking at recommending a spacing requirement between rental properties. Both the council and the HEDC committee expressed concern about the effect that it have on affordable housing. HEDC did not support the minimum spacing requirement. It just would impose another layer of restriction on where affordable rental housing could be located. The affordable housing location model adopted by city council currently limits where the city will financially support additional rental opportunities. Due to those concerns, staff was not recommending the spacing requirement. I would answer any questions you might have.
I'd like to start with one. The staff is recommending a 40% rental cap?
Yes.
For the neighborhoods. Why 40% instead of 30, 35, 45?
So we looked at our neighborhoods, and we looked at those percentages, and we took an educated guess on what we consider healthy, vibrant neighborhoods. And, you know, at that 30%, you look at Longfellow at 30%, I think there's no argument that that's a stable, healthy, you know, vibrant neighborhood. North Side, I think you have a lot of pressures at 58%. So looking in between there, we chose 40%.
I think just to add to that, I think your focus really needs to be on the heat map, and so it shows the concentration of nuisance and noise complaints. And if you look at the neighborhoods that are clearly affected by that, kind of the outer, the upper number is 54%. And then if you look at neighborhoods that seem to be healthy, like Longfellow, you've got a 30%. So that's where we put, that's why we came up to looking at between 30 and 54%, you know.
Do we know of any neighborhoods that are at 40%? I mean, the percentages we have in our districts are, in my mind, there's quite a difference between, you know, a district in the, in the high 20s versus 58% in the north side.
No, I mean, the map is up there. We don't have any that are right at 40%.
Well, I know that very many. If you had done, did you do any finer grain analysis, say, within, you know, what we've talked about is the, you know, where Goose Town is?
Sure.
Is tied into, to that larger district with subdivisions to the east?
Yeah, we did some.
We know what the rental, what the rental cap?
Yeah, we never got into that finer detail or dividing out any neighborhoods smaller than that.
I still have a question around, around the creates a temporary rental permit. So I've been talking to some folks that in Iowa City tend to leave for the winter. Wish I could do that myself. But they were, you know, the substantially similar reason, would individuals fall under that particular category when we're talking about folks that leave for the winter and then come back?
Um, yes, I think we had, I think we had one time even included that in the memo, but it's not, it's not in there, but that, that would be a reason, yeah.
Okay.
What about the issue of somebody who's moving out, Stan, and hasn't got their house sold but wanted to keep it rented? Would we consider that a reason?
Well, I mean, it happens.
Yeah, I mean, there's all sorts of different circumstances, you know, related to that.
I guess I would just throw that out.
Market conditions, yeah.
Possible, yeah.
The controlling factor on that one is it can't be more than two years.
Okay.
I think that's what's going to.
Sure.
Check.
So going to the enhances rental permit sanctions and increasing that to 24 months overall, you know, my questions I have are, you know, what are the fines for, you know, rental permit use in this sense, and could this lead to the rejection of the rental permit? I mean, so if, what's that criteria as far as, you know, if it gets to a certain sense? I mean, we have our heat map here from a nuisance standpoint. I think I asked this question before, but just kind of articulating it again.
Sure.
What is kind of the threshold?
Right. So currently, after two complaints, you're required to come in for a hearing where we spell out to the tenants and the landlord exactly what will happen if there's a third. I envision that if there's a third, that we're going to require like a property maintenance plan that's put in place. So depending on the severity of what has happened, the nuisances that are taking place, you know, is it, you know, the tenants aren't mowing the lawn, is the tenant's not shoveling the walk, that there's, there's ways to remedy that, and that's pretty easy for the landlord to take control of. Up and two, including evicting the tenants and putting a different group of tenants in there. But it could be as simple as they're providing lawn mowing service for this property because the tenants they have in there aren't capable of performing that task. So that will be spelled out, and that procedure will be spelled out between now and July. This provision will go into effect July 1st, and on July 1st, we're not looking back at the previous 12 months or any of that to see the complaints. Everybody will have a fresh start July 1st to move forward and make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as what the expectations are for the management companies and for the landlords. I kind of envision it, if you're not managing your property, you're probably going to fall victim to this, but good landlords aren't going to have a problem with this.
And if I could jump in there, if you recall, when the, when the state legislature was debating this item, what they frequently told cities who were saying, timeout, this is not a smart move, here's all the problems that we're seeing and we're going to continue to see, they said, you just, you already have the authority to deal with those, whether it's noise, trash, litter, parking. They told us, you just need to enforce what's on the books. You don't need this occupancy regulation to be able to do that. So I feel like if we're going to do anything in response to this, it has to be increased enforcement, and this is piece, this is a piece of it. We've also talked to you about increasing inspections and actually increasing staff to do more proactive inspections. You're not considering that tonight, but that is still coming.
Are you able to? Go ahead. I'd like to ask a clarifying question that might be of benefit to people watching this on TV or in the audience. Am I correct in understanding that for the six districts that exceed the recommended rental cap, that people, landlords who currently have permits for their rental units will retain them unless they do something wrong or?
Right, as long as they remain in good standing, they will retain their rental permit.
Yeah, it's only new rental permits?
Correct.
That would be affected by the?
Correct.
The cap, right?
And that's for single-family duplex properties?
And that would include upon the sale of a property?
Correct.
Were you able to calculate the percentage rentals in the Goose Town neighborhood in terms of what, what that looked like?
Uh, we were not. That came into us late, but I think that's something we're going to have to take into consideration.
Yeah, that's one concern I have with, when you look at this, I know when you're looking at this heat map, that's where we're getting the most complaints, but I guess the concern I have, and I don't know if there's a good way to address it, when you look at just across the boundaries from the areas that are over the 40%, and so now you can no longer get any rental, any new rental permits in those areas, the increased pressure for rental permits immediately outside of those areas. I don't know if there's a good solution, but I, before we get done with this, it's something I want us to think about a little bit more.
Yeah, I agree. You know, just, just yesterday, I was walking on Dewey Street and North Summit Street, and in fact, I saw the mayor of Dewey Street along the way, talk with her a little bit. But what, what I'm inclined to think, and we'll have to debate this, is that instead of using 40% as the cap, we use 35% as a cap. That would mean there could be some spillover of new rental units into adjacent neighborhoods, but at least that, the Hickory Hill neighborhood and whatever the other one is, the 30.7%, would hit the 35% cap fairly quickly if there's a big shift of rental units in their direction. And my sense is there's not any substantive or legally meaningful difference between 40% and 35% in terms of the, the reasoning that you're using involving the, the heat maps in relation to the, the rental caps.
You know what I would suggest is that you get public comment before you start forming your conclusions.
Just tossing out an idea.
I understand that, but I think that, you know, some of these issues have arisen since staff had their deliberations, and I think you should let the people who have those concerns tell you why, because some of that may form the basis on which you make a change.
Good point.
Okay.
Any other questions for Stan?
I think it's important to point out that the cap is for single-family and duplex units only, that multifamily units are not under that cap.
Yeah, I'll wait to.
So, yeah, so anything above three units in the structure, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you, Stan. Good evening.
Let me just see if I can get my PowerPoint up here. There we go.
Chris, right?
Yes, let me just get the PowerPoint up, and I'll be ready to go. Oh, great. Cancel.
All right. My name is Christopher Warnock. I represent the Goose Town Neighborhood Association, and I, with my wife, own a house in Goose Town. So essentially, as you can see from the map here, I've gone ahead and used the map. You know, where is Goose Town? That's a little bit of a vex question, the exact boundaries, but essentially, on this map, you can see east of Governor, north of Rochester, and then bounded by the cemetery in the north, and then Hickory Hill. Goose Town is a historic neighborhood, very diverse, central city neighborhood, and close into the university, with all the positives and negatives that you get from that placement. Goose Town Neighborhood Association strongly supports the rental permit cap. We think this is an excellent way to protect the diversity of older, closer neighborhoods like Goose Town, so it's exactly what it's for. We strongly support this innovative effort. We think it's a fair and reasonable balance. That's what we're looking for, is a balance of interest of stakeholders. What this cap does is maintain a vibrant mix of rentals and owner-occupied properties. That's what we love about Goose Town, is it has, everybody can live there. Now, here's what happened. When the staff came to do the boundaries, they used the open district boundaries, and that's a focus on, not on neighborhoods, but again, on open district. So we got stuck in with Hickory Hill, and so there's no rental cap on ours, we're below that 40% cap. If you look here now at the heat map, I think that's your key map, you can see Goose Town again, and we have a profile that is very similar to North Side. We have older houses, we have this high level of noise complaints and other problems. If you look at the other adjoining neighborhoods that are further away in Hickory Hill, these are newer neighborhoods, they're suburban, they have nowhere near the level of rentals and nowhere near the level of problems of Goose Town. Goose Town really is much more like North Side, and it's only inadvertent, this was, these boundaries were selected not because they were looking at the rental cap issue, but just because... but just because they're a completely different purpose. So it's really, the reaction was almost like oops when I brought this up. This was not something they were thinking about. Goose Town is one of those neighborhoods that was, that they want to have under the cap. Now, we believe that rentals are already above 40% in Goose Town. You can walk down a block, you can see every, every house on one block will be rentals. With, with Goose Town and Hickory Hill, it's uncapped. So if you go west of Governor, frozen east of Governor, then it's unchecked rentals, exactly as Susan was talking about. So that's going to put incredibly heavy pressure on Goose Town. If you're a developer or landlord, you can say, hey, where am I going to go now? I'm going to go right into Goose Town, buy up those older houses, stuff in the rentals, and we've got the same problem getting even worse. So we're actually worse off with this rental cap if the boundary doesn't get moved. So rather than looking at the percentage, I think that's a bigger issue. I think 40% makes sense to me politically. All we need to do for Goose Town is to tweak the boundary. So I think the suggestion would be to either put us in with Northside or set up a separate Goose Town district. And I think the thing for the council to do is direct the staff to take a look at that at a granular level. Look at Goose Town and say, we need to make sure these guys kind of are under the cap. They need the protection of this to maintain that vibrant neighborhood that they have. So I think that, again, I, I think that 40% makes a lot of sense to me. There's a certain amount of compromise that goes on. We're going to have problems with landlords and developers. And I think that the easiest thing to do is rather than change that for the entire impact zone, just tweak our district and make sure Goose Town doesn't fall between the cracks. So I thank you very much for allowing us to speak. We have a number of other people from Goose Town that would like to speak on this issue. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Good evening.
Good evening, Council. My name is Christine Boyer. I am a resident in the Goose Town neighborhood. And I'm here also on behalf of the Goose Town Neighborhood Association. And I just was a little alarmed when I saw the overlay and what I think would be potentially an unintended consequence of hooking Goose Town in with the Hickory Hill district overlay. I think if you're looking at that 40% number, and I believe Hickory Hill district is at 30.8, then that's a close, not quite 10% number that would probably inadvertently end up a lot in the Goose Town neighborhood. So I just wanted you all to be thinking about Goose Town and maybe re-discuss this further. But we love our neighborhood and we like, like its diversity. It's a very unique spot and it is small, but it is ours. So please, you know, revisit this and, but we do think that the cap, generally speaking, is a, is a good plan. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine.
Hi, I'm Nancy Carlson. I thought I lived in College Green until I saw the maps. And now I am told that I live in Hickory Hill. For years, College Green included my, that little section below Goose Town from Governor to Clapp was part of College Hill. Now suddenly it isn't. To the east of me, College Green went to Parsons Street. That's how I've always known my neighborhood. Now it stops at Muscatine. And from Muscatine on to Parsons, it becomes part of City High. So if you're looking at this as a 40% cap on these areas, if I were in College Green, there would, which is where I always thought I lived, I would not, there would not be any more rentals in my area. But since you have switched the boundaries around, I am now susceptible to more rental properties in my area. From this, I have come to the conclusion that when you deal with boundaries as a way of determining your 40%, where the boundaries are are very, very important. Let us look at Longfellow. Now, the Longfellow that I know, according to the neighborhood associations of Iowa City, is a small section of that. The Longfellow thing on this map includes Longfellow, part of Creekside, and part of Eastside. So if 40% of Longfellow, close to downtown, suddenly is capped at 40%, and that's where the, where it is most likely that the rental people are going to go in, that means that the people who live out farther are not ever going to have to worry about having any rentals in their area. So the, how you determine the districts with the way we have it set up right now makes a really big difference. It's also true, as I said, the east part of College Green, that is part of College Green, as I know it, is now in City High. So I would assume that the rental, the rentals will continue to Seventh Avenue. That area, there are smaller homes, they're less expensive. It hits 50% after Seventh Avenue, the people on the other side are never going to have to worry about being affected by rental units. According to the city thing, according to the memorandum that was done for this in September, and the study was to mitigate the impacts of rental housing and increasing occupancy levels on neighborhood stability, housing affordability, public and tenant safety, urban congestion, blight, risk to public peace and order, conflicts between rental and owner-occupied housing, and excessive demands upon public safety, infrastructure, and municipal purposes. I believe that this is our goal. Now, does this mean that this goal is only for certain neighborhoods? Or are we attempting to have this goal for all neighborhoods? I believe with the 40% cap by districts, this is going to impact some areas. It will, it will be great for some areas, and it will impact other areas in a very negative way. You say that you have picked the 40%. Yesterday and this morning, I read the 582 pages for this, for the issue before you right now that I am speaking on. And that the major example was from Winona, Wisconsin, or Winona, Minnesota, I'm sorry. In 2005, they, they were dealing with this same problem. They decided that they would put a cap on of 30%. They decided that they would regulate that cap by block. Each block could only have 30% rental units. There, there were numerous, there were some court decisions that questioned this. It was upheld every time. In 2009, they looked over this again to see if they felt that this was working and did they need to change it? They said, no, this is working very well. We are not going to change it.
Nancy, Nancy, could you please wrap it up?
My question is, what is the goal of the city, of the city and the city council? And who do they want to protect? Some neighborhoods or do they want to protect all neighborhoods? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Hello, I'm Austin Wu. I live on Burlington Van Puren Street, so that technically put me inside Bowery neighborhood, which I believe on the map was 82% rentals. Anyway, I'm a student at the university and I have a couple of concerns with the proposed rental cap. The first concern initially had is that in the long run, it would place an artificial cap on housing supply to effectively create a price floor on rents. So already we know that like rent is an issue for many students and that this would only further increase it by restricting the housing supply. And my second concern I had was, MIMs actually brought this up with the whole entire overspill of, potential overspill of rental properties into further outlined neighborhoods, is that it would negatively impact walkability in the Iowa City area. Because if we look at, if we go back to the heat map, if I can do that, yeah. The highest, the areas with the highest percentage of rental properties are also the ones closest to downtown campus. So we had overspill into the lower density, lower neighborhoods further east and west. That could potentially increase the proportion of students that drive to class, could, you know, so that would create its own source of problems. And I think it would run counter to the city's goals of promoting sustainability and walkability in the area. So I would personally ask that this rental cap not be put in place. And actually, then I actually have one final point. Many of the concerns noted, such as poor maintenance or weeds or failure for snow removal, I think the proposal for the rental cap sometimes unnecessarily blames students for things that are not necessarily their fault. Oftentimes, maintenance or snow removal or like lawn care in the lease is mentioned as the responsibility of the property management company, not the tenants. So I think, you know, like oftentimes, these complaints aren't, like, aren't to be blamed on the tenants, but to be blamed on the property management companies themselves.
Thank you. Did you say your first name is Austin?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, thanks.
And then Wu, W U.
Yeah.
My name is Emily Legal. I am a student and I currently live at the corner of Burlington Dodge. I'm approaching this from an affordable housing background. I'm studying urban and regional planning for my master's degree, but I've lived in Iowa City for two years prior as an undergraduate. I'm concerned, like Austin is, about the effects of the rental cap on the student and the affordable housing situation. While I'm currently on a half-time teaching assistantship and I'm not cost burdened like I was last year when I wasn't on an assistantship, I was an undergrad working for basically university minimum wage, which was lower than Iowa City's unfortunately. I'm worried that this new cap on rental units will not only create the spillover effects that people were talking about into other neighborhoods, but just basically make housing affordability a bigger issue in the downtown area neighborhoods. Where is the map here? I recently did, I've done some neighborhood studies as part of Jerry Anthony's class. But we know that we, Iowa City is also already facing an affordable housing crisis with nearly 57% of renters in the city being cost burdened, according to research released last year from the Federal Reserve Bank of Chicago. And I think by limiting the number of permits, you're just going to push what single families renters we have in the neighborhoods like College Green, like Northside, and Bowery Street, which is, I guess, where I live currently. And they're just going to push them into different parts of the city. Also, I oppose, I'm just really opposed to the boundaries of the map in general. I think it covers basically everywhere where students live and it's not addressing the fact that the university can only provide 20% of the housing needs, according to the packet that I read this afternoon. Your own city planners know that the university, while in the 1960s and 50s, they provided all of student housing needs, they currently can only provide 28%. I just think there's a huge need and I think, not only from the student side, from the cost burden side, but also from the families that we want to integrate into these neighborhoods, like the neighborhoods surrounding Horace Mann Elementary School, for example. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily.
Good evening, Benjamin Nelson, city liaison for the University of Iowa Student Government. 816 North Buke Street. So first, I just want to commend the city and the staff for considering these zoning or housing code changes that improve the quality of life for student housing. Notably, the deadlocks, as was mentioned, that was a request from UISG, and so we're happy to see that go through. But then also, the minimum bedroom size at 35%, that's key. We don't need students living in bedrooms as if they're Harry Potter or something underneath a staircase. And I, but I also want to like, kind of just make a quick point before I get into my talking points about the rental permit cap, is that we're, this is all being considered in one single block. And so I would hope, I would urge any city councillor who is wanting to kind of vote yes one way for one initiative, but then vote no for another, that they break up the, the item into multiple items because it doesn't seem necessary that, while, while related to housing, that they're kind of joined together in one item. So then with that said, when we're talking about the rental permit caps, I think it's important to kind of take a step back and ask like, why are we having, wanting these rental permit caps? If that, the answer to that is to decrease those neighborhoods so that only like X amount of rental permits in the neighborhoods are occupied. So if we truly want to get down the Northside neighborhood to 35% single-family rental units, this certainly isn't the way to go about it. The reason being because all these units are being grandfathered in. And so with that said, I myself will likely be a grandfather before the Northside neighborhood becomes 35% under this rental code. So then the only logical conclusion for this is that it provides an incentive for landlords to kind of maintain their properties. And as we're talking about these heat maps, a lot of them come from noise and nuisance complaints. And those oftentimes can't be delineated, at least to my knowledge, when the map is, was made, they, those two things were not delineated. That kind of brings up what Austin Wu was saying earlier and that, you know, if it's a nuisance complaint, if it's something about snow removal, it's something about grass, that's not really a lot of, that's not really what the tenant can, is expected to handle, at least legally speaking. At least that's not what their leases make them do. That, that would be a landlord thing. And so with that said, if we have a rental cap period to a point where it incentivized landlords to maintain their properties, then I think we will achieve kind of the goal that we're looking for, that we have livable neighborhoods that, you know, don't have grass growing six feet tall. But with that said, I don't think it's necessary that we have a rental permit cap as drastically low as 40 or even 35%. To me, as long as we have a binding rental cap, that is to say, if it's below, you know, 58% for the Northside neighborhood, 82% for Bowery, as long as that, that cap is binding and that the landlords have an opportunity to permanently lose their rental permits, they will pay attention. And as Stan said, if they don't pay attention, then they're SOL and that's on them. So just kind of, just to wrap up, it is getting late. Or also, I mean, I guess one more point is that the rental permit is also kind of an inaccurate solution to the problem. I think housing for students are substitute goods in terms of like where they live. Students look for a proximity to campus and then price. They don't live in Goose Town or Northside for the same reasons long-term residents do for their historic nature. They live out there because it's affordable. And I think we can, like, as a community, reach an agreement in that if we promote housing density in, say, Riverfront Crossings, if we allow high-rise buildings to be built there, students will flock to those because, one, it increases supply. Two, it allows students to be where they want to be and that's close to campus. But then that's a win for the long-term residents of Goose Town, Northside, because students are no longer living in their neighborhoods. They're no longer dealing with the noise complaints. They're no longer dealing with these issues that are otherwise concentrated with our demographic. And so I think we can reach a consensus to promote development on the supply side for students to live and then allowing rental prices to subsequently come down. So that's my two cents. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Thanks, Ben. Good evening.
Hi, guys, I'm Danny Colachi. I'm a resident of Goose Town. I live on Reno Street. First, I just want to thank you guys for all the work you do. I'm here, as has been said before by Chris and Christine, that we're concerned as Goose Town residents about the ways in which the districting has been set up such that if this cap moves forward the way that you guys have described it and Goose Town is lumped into Hickory Hill, we'll have a 10% room roughly in which we would increase our rentals. And I think that if we did a more, as has been said, a more granual, granular, I should say, look at what was going on in Goose Town, you would see that it's likely already over 40% of rentals. And I don't want to see the neighborhood that I live in love be disrupted from the balance that it has. I've owned my home now for over two years. But I also rented in Goose Town when I first moved back to take my job in the university because I wanted a space that was close enough to walk to campus, but that I could also participate in that little community and that beautiful neighborhood. I purchased my home.
Let's see, times two. Well, as often happens with some of these things, there will be unintended consequences, as I'm sure all of you have probably thought about. Of course, I'm on the other end of town, and before I started buying property over in the Miller Orchard neighborhood, I can tell you that many of those houses were really rundown. And maybe another concern that you should bring into some of this is, how about some of the owner-occupied properties? I can drive around, and I can tell you, some of the owner-occupied properties are really bad. There's stuff in the yards, there's shingles that are bad, paint jobs that are bad. But there are a lot of good landlords. And this kind of affects the small person, the person who has just a couple of houses, a couple duplexes possibly. And we're not trying to invade the area, but some of us are trying to actually improve the area. And my question comes in, is if you've got an area that is over your, whatever your percentage is going to be, and you've got some rundown houses, but they don't have a permit on them, is there going to be anything in place where, for example, I can come in and buy a property and clean it up and put a rental permit on it? Because oftentimes, if something like this happens, now you buy it, but you can't do anything with it. And in an effort to keep, in Iowa City, there's never going to be affordable rent. You're all kidding yourself. That's not going to happen because of all of the other expenses. And every time you add another layer onto the landlords, it filters down and affects the tenants. If you have to hire more housing inspectors, which we can see that all coming, then the rental permits will go up, and that money's got to come from somewhere, and it's going to come from the tenants. So maybe you kind of need to rethink it in reverse, because the city actually has the tools in place to handle most of these problems. If you've got a snow removal issue, go out, remove it, bill the owner. A lot of the problems are on out-of-town owners and the management companies. They got a management company. The owners don't even know what's going on. And maybe if you go one step over to the owners, maybe that'll help you a little bit. But for the noise and a lot of these other issues, you've already got those codes in place. You don't need to add something else. Just get them out there and get them to enforce it. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna.
My name is Dominic Audi, and I live on Fairchild Street. We, my wife and I, Mary, just moved into the area. And so we're in, we are in one of those areas that is a heat zone. And probably the first week, we got the pleasure of meeting Stan. We have a boarding house right beside our house with six, maybe more, students that live in it. And I think that enforcement, we are for the rental cap, by the way. I'm a strong advocate of enforcement. I really think that we need to try to beef that up if we are going to impose rental caps. Parking is an issue. The fines, $15 parking tickets, that's all they are. For the Hawkeye game, which was a great victory this weekend, the whole street, Fairchild Street, was packed, all the way from Dubuque Street all the way to Gilbert. Everybody was parking on the wrong side, and they all just, first of all, it wasn't enforced, they didn't get tickets. And, you know, I think there's people parking in the wrong spots, but in terms of the rental problem in our area, I think that there is, it's very hard to enforce. It's hard to tell exactly how many, how many people are in a unit, and where exactly, or how exactly we can enforce that. So I'd just like to radiate that we are definitely in favor of having a rental cap and strong or stiffer enforcements. Thanks.
Thanks, Dominic. It's nice to see a new neighbor.
Well, I listened to the discussion with great interest, and I am in favor of the rental cap. I think it's too high. I think it ought to be 30%. And then just see, after a few years, how that's working out. And not look at this as a thing of, we do it now, and it's that way forever. If you make it 40%, it'll be very difficult to do anything less. If you make it 40, if you make it 30, and you find that that's not enough, you can always raise the cap. The other thing is, is that I think a very sensible suggestion was to do this by block. And that gets away from arguing about these boundaries. And, you know, I've lived in the same place, you know, for a very, very long time, and I, my precinct has changed, and, you know, my designation of what area I'm living in has changed, and essentially, all because of a bureaucratic reason of some sort. And I think that basically, the block by block makes an awful lot more sense. And I have a lot of sympathy about the students' problems, but, you know, I also remember in the days before the per-isle rule was gotten rid of. And we did not have a housing problem then, because the students had to live in university housing. And, you know, the real villain in this is the state legislature and the university, who have inadequately funded university housing and expected Iowa City to pick it up. And of course, entrepreneurs have made money on the students. And basically, I think the lady who said that we would never have affordable housing in this town is probably correct. And as it is, you're having people coming in from Williamsburg, and God only knows where, to take jobs here, because they simply can't afford, you know, to live here. And I don't know what the problem there is, aside from maybe birth control, but in any event, I'd say go for the more conservative 30% cap, and do it block by block, and stop the arguing about where the boundaries go. Because I think that that just leads to dissatisfaction. Nobody's going to really be happy.
Thank you, Caroline.
Hi, my name is Charlie Eastham, 953 Canton Street in Iowa City. I'm here because I'm a member of the Housing and Community Development Commission. And you may have noticed in the staff memo that the HCDC considered this proposed set of policies and ordinances at our meeting on October 30th. Our meeting for October was delayed, so you haven't had a chance to see the minutes for that meeting, or to see our discussion and our recommendations about, about these proposals. So I would just ask that the council, you may go ahead and take a first consideration tonight, but at least before your second consideration, that you look at the minutes for the HCDC meeting, because we did have some interesting discussions, I think, particularly about the percentage cap proposals. And of course, the commission would be willing to do anything else that the council asks us to do in consideration of these, these measures. Thanks.
Thanks, Charlie.
Regina Bailey. I'm a
Good evening, Regina.
resident of Goose Town, and that's why I was originally came here. But I want to go back to something that Susan said. I can all, I can only imagine those neighbors and neighborhoods that are on the edge that will face that spillover effect. So as you consider this, really think hard about that, because it's going to affect a lot of places. I mean, Goose Town is about a mile from downtown. So is Parsons, so are areas on Glendale. Those are attractive areas. That's an easy, easy walk, and certainly an easy bike ride to downtown. And so as you cap those rental permits in those core areas that you're looking at, that spillover is inevitably going to happen. The reason I live in Goose Town is because I could, I could afford to buy a house there. If I were fighting with developers to purchase that house, there's no way I could have gotten a house there. So that's also going to be an effect of that spillover. So I like the idea of the 30%. What Caroline said is, yeah, you can always raise it, but you're not going to be able to go down from 40. So instead of fighting about the neighborhoods, look, look more broadly, maybe at the districts you've got, and look at a 30% cap. Thanks.
Thank you, Regina.
Well, we can't have, can't have a meeting without one of the developers
There you go.
... of the large landlords coming up to talk to you. My name's Mike Olivera. I own Prestige Properties. I think that we've heard a lot that would warrant the council to consider tabling this measure for further review. There's things in this measure that I think need some clarification. I wish I had an opportunity to ask Stan a few more questions about some of the clauses in there. Because there is certain things on the table, on the books, that can cause enforcement, disorderly houses, they're very expensive for the tenants. Believe me, I hear that from, if we get them. We've only had a couple of them the last couple of years. But the parents are concerned, and rightly so. But having those fines and fees is a deterrent. And I think when you look at the map, one of the big issues I have with the map and the noise complaints, because I live in the area, I'm three blocks away from campus, you know, I, I come back and they say, well, you know what, the police need to enforce maybe some more patrols in our neighborhood at night, rather than waiting for calls to come in. A lot of times, they'll say, well, where's the noise complaint? And I've called them in several times. I said, well, I don't know. I can hear it a block away. It's so loud. So I think there are more issues here than just having a cap. I like the idea. You know, we haven't had enough time to digest all the things in this proposal, because it was laid on the apartment association. Members only had a few days to really digest what was coming out of this. And, you know, and as far as the city council's concerned, I think that's really a challenge. You say you're open, but we haven't had enough time to get our members to come back here and start really talking about this. Some things in those Minnesota proposals, I started going through it, my attorneys were going through it today, we were jamming trying to get ready, prepare for this meeting. I got to tell you, there just hadn't been enough time. There's some things about the block by block, makes sense. Districting, I'm not so sure. But I can tell you that some of the proposals here that were thrown out, they sound good, don't make sense. For example, the duplexes, of telling the duplex owners that they have to partition the, the, the units that they can't be adjoining. There's some duplexes that are up and downstairs that they share a common hallway. They may share a common laundry. Those things, this ordinance doesn't make sense. I think that needs to be back and reviewed and talked about, try to figure out what the ultimate goals are. The lock issue on some of my older homes, where I have families in those units, they want deadbolts on them. I understand where some of the students in those bigger houses want that, but in my historic houses, some on the Northside, I got to tell you, I'm going to be crying putting a deadbolt in some of those doors. I think we got to consider the cost. Now, it's about $100 to put that deadbolt in on all these rental units. Now, where's that cost going to go? Everybody's talking about affordability. There you go, it's going to go up. Stan's talking about more inspectors, more rental inspections per year? Is it never going to go down from two years to one year? Boy, I got to tell you, I can, I know what the cost is. It's going to add $10 per person in that rental unit per month. Because I got to put in staff, I got to go through those units, I got to have staff there. I don't know what is buying us. Now, I can, I think a good balance is, and I think the city council should know this, I have five projects that were converting student housing or housing back to single-family in the Northside, going on right now. The trend is to have that, the housing to go back to single-family, if they're, if they're well-constructed, units, and the money's put in by the developer, the people are willing to pay the price. I just sold one on Ronald's, we were at $220 a square foot. Well, some people say, well, the price is driving up. Well, people came in and bought it because the quality was there. We sold one on Bloomington Street over there, in the 1300 block, same thing. We got a good price for the unit, we totally remodeled the unit, a single-family person came in and bought the unit. And I got to tell you, we see the demand, but we still have to balance this out. And I think the city council needs to go back and tell the housing department, to work with the apartment association, talk to, maybe some more input from the community members, to take a look at the study in Minnesota, let's take a look at this thing by, block by block, to try to figure out where the balance is. And my goal in my neighborhood is, I have problem houses where I live. And you know what? I already went and talked to the owners. My solution was just to buy them. I'm like the other, the landlady that came up here. I got a problem in my neighborhood, I'm financially secure enough, I could buy those houses and fix them up.
Mike, could you wrap it up, please?
Yeah, I will. So I think the city council should really take a look at tabling this measure to, in fact, to further discussion, get better input from the community members and from the property owners. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. All right, no more further public comment tonight. Discussion among council members.
I am generally supportive. However, I think, as we always say, the devil's in the details. And I think there's a number of details that we need to work out. Another however, we have a January 1 deadline that I think is critically important. Our moratorium is up on January 1st. We already know how many applicants, or applications for permits had been put in as soon as the state law went into effect, to enlarge houses, add bedrooms, that sort of thing. I want to make sure we have something on the books by January 1st that will allow us to control that. What we have on the books on January 1st may not be perfect. I don't expect it will be. But I think we do need to try to move forward so that by our last meeting in December, we're able to pass something. Okay? I am very concerned about the boundaries. I do think there will be this spillover. I think we will have areas just over the boundaries that will end up being very, very high-density of rental permits, maybe 40, 50, 60, 70%, because the rest of the district will be a much lower percent. So that's very concerning to me. Goose Town has been well-represented here tonight, and has talked about their issues. So I have concerns about the way the boundaries are drawn. And I say that in not meaning any criticism to staff, you had to start somewhere, and I get that. I'm not necessarily convinced that block by block, that we want to take it down to that miniscule a level. I'm open to ideas and suggestions with where we are tonight. I'm going to vote yes on this first reading. I realize we may have to, depending on the changes we make, we may have I realize we may have to, depending on the changes we make, we may have to start over at a new first reading if our changes are significant enough. But I think that gives the public enough information and foresight about the direction that we're headed, that I know I will be able to feel comfortable with collapsing readings if we have to in December, to get something, at least a reasonable start on the books before the end of the year.
I agree, Susan. I think if, one of the key issues I think that we're facing here is this question of, you know, one district bordering another with a significant difference in the percentages. The original proposal by staff, I think, began to try to address that with the distance requirements, because that, in a way, provided the same kind of, as we've been sort of speaking of it, granular level to the application. And I understand the concerns of the, where am I here? You know, the Housing and Community Development Commission regarding affordable housing. However, my sense is, my observations have been that the market forces are such that, as we've been essentially saying, where if we have these disparities in percentages, that edge is going to move with the higher percentages because of the economics that drive student housing, which is basically, you know, students getting together, combining their rents, and renting the entire structure, whereas a conventional household is occupying the structure as one household. And in most instances, the student rental or, you know, short-term rental of unrelateds will outcompete a family, a conventional family. So that's why, over time, over the last 50 years, this area impacted by the student housing has continued to increase in size. So I think the cap, you know, I live in the north side, it's 58%. Our concerns was, if this were to continue, especially with the lifting of the unrelated cap, in 10 years, there wouldn't be anyone left. I mean, it would just all eventually go to student rental. And this is not meant to be, you know, I understand that on the other side of this equation, that's more affordable housing for the students. But I think we're trying to find a balance here. And so my feeling is, we don't even know what the impact of lifting the cap is going to be. That's an uncertainty that we have no understanding of. We don't know how the increase in house size will play out geographically. So I, like Caroline and Regina, I feel we, this is something that's gonna develop over time. Whatever we decide now, we can always change the percentages. I'm very concerned with going from, you know, a situation where it seems things are relatively stable at 30% and allow 40% when we know that's going to generally take place in areas where we're either at 30 or over 30. And I don't think that's what we want the outcome to be. So I would be, I think what I would be most comfortable with would be looking at 35 and revisiting the question of whether we could introduce the distance requirements, because I think the idea there is it still opens up the opportunity for increased rental in that district, but it means they have to be dispersed, which I sense is really what this is all about, is trying to avoid concentrations where we do allow additional rental to take place.
Eleanor, I'd like to ask you a legal question about how we could proceed. If we want to make substantive changes at some point in this ordinance, might it be best to approve the ordinance as-is and then amend it later so we can get it on the books and then, you know, make substantive amendments later? Or would it be better to make changes, start over, start the process over again, and then collapse some readings like I think Susan recommended? Because we are under a time pressure here.
Right. I mean, I think that's really more a political issue, how you choose, whether you want to, as Susan says, vote for it to signal that you're interested in some approach and then make amendments that might have to back you up to first reading. Or you can simply not, you know, defer it and give some direction to staff and we'll come back to you with new recommendations and you can vote on that or not vote on that. So it really just depends on how you want to approach it, knowing that if you vote tonight and we make a substantive change based on some direction you've given us or something that we've heard and we think needs to be recommended to you, we have to give whatever you adopt three readings, so we'll have to back up and do it. But we have, I mean, we have some time. It has to be in place by January 1st, but we've got some time here.
Yeah. I guess I would really like to defer it to allow for substantive changes, would be my view. I think this question of the spillover effect, as Susan mentions, I think is absolutely critical. That is gonna be a real challenge to figure out if you're on the other side of a looking glass, so to speak, what happens in that scenario. And I definitely do not think that we want a situation where an effort to stabilize and make the neighborhoods have a greater diversity of renters and single-family housing, that that then results in a destabilizing impact in people on the outside of those boundaries. Is it, did staff consider the possibility of a block-based structure? Was that not feasible? Or are there legal concerns? I mean, because it's one of those things that, you know, we get to make the easy decision in terms of critiquing the boundaries, but I'm sure it's hard to come up with the boundaries. So what was the process like?
Yeah. My recollection of the block by block, I mean, and we thought about it, was the administrative hurdles of doing a block by block. Is that right, Stan? Because as I think Nancy mentioned, that was, you know, it's not unusual.
It becomes very staff-intensive. And what we use as an example is you have the affordable housing model with very few affordable housing providers. And even the staff time that that requires for them calling to say, is this property eligible? Is this property eligible? So then multiply that by the landlords and developers in this town calling on every single property. And then mapping-wise, I mean, you put, you end up with very few houses that would be eligible for rental based off of the distance requirement between the rentals. So.
Maybe you could restate the question.
He was asking if Bob Michel, but those maps, he was asking if Bob Michel has those maps. And we have one version of it, but this is something that changes as rental permits come on, rental permits come off. It just becomes very cumbersome as you move forward.
Okay.
Because I guess related to that, I think the other thing is if there's any way from, because it seems like the numbers are like this, and they're like a steep cliff. And I'm just wondering if there's a way that we can address that in a way that makes sense. So I guess I would like to table it. If we have the time, we can dig deep into some of the proposals, is what I would like to do, because I think that's gonna be a huge problem. And I also would like to see a lower percentage, at least to start. And I think if that proves inadequate, it seems like to me it's less problematic to increase it over time.
Yeah, I have a few thoughts I want to express, and they won't be thorough, but I want to mention them. I think any boundary-based map we use is gonna have spillover problems. It is unavoidable. So there's that fact. I don't think the block approach makes sense for the logistic reasons that Stan just articulated. With regard to the spillover effect, my pretty strong sense is if we have a low cap, relatively speaking, like 35% instead of 40, then adjacent neighborhoods would hit that spillover effect, I mean, the 35%, pretty quickly. And suddenly, they'd be affected by a rental cap. So it's not as if they'd see an explosion in rental units within their neighborhoods. Another thing I think about has to do with concerns about affordable housing, which clearly are very important, and we pay a lot of attention to that. But what's not been mentioned, or at least not emphasized, is that there are at least two major activities underway that are increasing the supply of housing in the area close to downtown. And that increase in supply is going to accelerate, I believe, and I'm referring to multi-unit structures, especially in the riverfront crossings district, the rise of Lincoln Court Street being the prime example of that, with 700 units, I don't know, something like that, or beds, 700 beds. And I know there's other stuff in process. And I think I saw in a recent report, something like 5,000 units are under construction or planned for construction of the type that I just described. Am I saying units or beds? I don't remember which it is, so anyhow. So there is this increase in supply that is underway, and it's gonna have a significant effect in terms of converting what right now is clearly a landlord's market into something that's much more like a renter's market. And that will have, I don't know if it's gonna affect rents, because frankly, I don't see any evidence that landlords are willing to decrease rents, even when things like property taxes get decreased. So that's a concern. But I think all those factors come together to make me think we should adopt, that I'll vote for the ordinance as presented to us tonight. I believe we should amend it to reduce the cap to 35%. And if you all have other specific substantive changes you really think we need to make, they should be clear. That's what I'm gonna do tonight.
I would agree.
I agree with you, Jim, overall, generally supportive of the entire thing, but lowering it to 35 from the 40. And looking at maybe the boundary thing, though, to it at some time in the future. Again, like Susan said, going block by block is kind of minuscule, but there's gotta be a different way that equalizes things, such as the Goostown situation. And I agree. I think, I think maybe we're thinking down the line that there's going to be more and more rentals encroaching on the neighborhoods, when perhaps, as these multi-units go up, the rentals will go to those units rather than in the neighborhoods.
There's a lot of unknowns, for sure. I mean, there's a lot of uncertainty about this. There's a lot of moving parts. We have to recognize there's a lot of uncertainty about that. And there will be unintended consequences, as Anna, if she, no, she left and she, there will be unintended consequences. But we must do the best we can do on this.
I have a question. This maybe comes legal or... Is it, can we justify setting different caps in different areas? My point being that the basis for that, we're talking about spillover. Okay? Because we don't, because some areas are already over what we're talking about for a cap, can we set different caps on different areas to try to mitigate that spillover effect? In other words, I look at this and people are talking about 35%. Okay? Well, the city-high area is only at 16.9% right now. A 35% for that area still could have drastic ramifications, potentially, for that area. Can we justify legally, I guess, that we would set caps that are, say, only a certain amount above where they are right now to, at least temporarily, to try to mitigate that spillover as we kind of see what's happening? So let's say for the city-high area, it's at 16.9 right now, we said the cap there is 25. Maybe we say the Hickory Hill, which is 30.8, we set it 35. So we're giving some room.
In terms of boundaries and spillover, I'm not gonna, I mean, I think you need to give staff some time to take a look at the boundaries and that issue. There may be discrete things that can be addressed that will take care of, you know, some of those problems, and we need to talk about the block area again and that kind of thing. I have less concern about you changing the percentage, because I frankly think between 30 and 54%, if you, I think there's a rational basis to set it at 35, just like there is to set it at 40.
Sure.
So I'm not, I'm less concerned about that. But I'm not, you know, the whole analysis was done not only based on the literature that we've reviewed, but also based on what this heat map is showing us. And so in terms of starting to make different percentages for different areas, that causes me some burn.
So I want to go back to something Rocky said, because I would say that I'm generally supportive as well. I do think that there are some concerns that we do need to table. I mean, I'm interested in the boundary conversation, you know, that, you know, some of the comments that public comment, I appreciate Eleanor kind of waiting to say, you know, let's hear from the public first, to kind of hear what some of the concerns are from that perspective. I would say that a lot of the comments kind of moved me as far as, you know, what are the boundary considerations? How does that look from that standpoint? Not only from the Goostown standpoint, but just in general. Because for me, even looking at it, going back from the spillover standpoint, that could substantially change the percentage. And so I feel a little problematic up here, making a decision that ultimately could change, you know, at the next meeting. And so in respect to those, those are my kind of big issues as far as why we should table the conversation. I will point out, this is just a general comment, that I do have a problem with kind of this cost analysis and how, you know, ultimately, we've now heard unequivocally from some folks that the cost burden of a lot of these changes will fall back on the tenants, which is unaffordable. And, you know, I don't have a problem with speaking the truth, but I think that's a problem that, you know, in our affordable housing conversation, needs to be thought about in some way, shape, or form. The other point that I would just mention, you know, kind of giving kudos to the students in talking about kind of the rental caps, as far as, you know, necessarily the best way of handling this, but, you know, I go back to Susan's point, discussing this from a timetable perspective. I think we're up against a timeline, and, you know, this is kind of, I would feel like it's really good, the proposal that staff is preparing. And so I, from that standpoint, going back to kind of generally supportive, I have no problem with that. I would also agree with lowering the percentage overall, maybe looking, I was actually moved by some of the comments, 30%, 35% sounds good as well. But, you know, if we're gonna look at it again, tabling the discussion to spend more time, kind of deliberating, there's one more point that I was gonna mention, and I lost it on my notes. Look at boundary discussions, should we? Yeah, I think mainly mine was looking at that, the boundary conversation, because, you know, there were some concerns that were brought up tonight. And then even before that, when we talked about in the stand's presentation, it was, you know, staff wants to look back at some of the comments that happened over email as well. I want to give staff the opportunity to do that. I think we signaled it as far as having this conversation in general from a public perspective. And so I, I mean, like I said, I feel generally supportive, but I, for me, I really feel comfortable tabling the discussion and waiting until the next reading, or for the first reading next time.
I have no preference in terms of whether we approve it tonight or table it tomorrow. In my mind, making sure we get something in place by the end of the year. One other comment I would make is on the question of affordable housing. And I think when we had this at a previous work session, we talked about one strategy might be to allow, say, a, you know, affordable housing organization such as the housing fellowship, purchasing homes, which would then be rented, and that that wouldn't fall under the cap. You know, that would be something where an exception would be made. That seems to me the viable, certainly a viable way of addressing, preserving affordability for long-term residents, because, as I said, I think we have to, affordability for long-term residents has to somehow pull itself out of the market, because the market forces are so powerful that, you know, a family with low incomes is just never going to find affordable housing in these areas, because they're competing, you know, with something that will always outbid them.
That actually reminded me of my other point. Stan, can you just answer the question around, you know, it came across in the email, I think it was brought up prior to the conversation, and we moved it from the original 30 to 35% in regards to limiting bedroom area. But even still, I mean, in particular, this email reminded me of, you know, some families that I know have large families and how that works out. I mean, do we have a response to this particular question around kind of the percentage in relation to just general affordability as it relates to the Affordable Action Plan?
One more time on that one.
Well, just looking at the percentages, you know.
Sure.
And I know we moved it up from 30 to 35%.
Correct.
And I know we moved it up from 30 to 35%.
Correct.
But, you know, what I guess my question is, is I know that you haven't had a chance, but in general, looking at how do we respond to those questions around affordability and looking at larger family sizes, what are our, what's our response?
Sure.
I'm sure we went through that process of thinking about it.
Right. And we also have safety valves built into that provision of the code, that if you had, for example, if you had an affordable housing provider coming in, and they said, look, we're building homes for larger families, and that bedroom percentage was different from that, but they're providing all the things that you commonly see in a house with adequate space for communal living, we have provisions in the code to approve that. And then as far as, you know, cost, the affordable housing component of it, you know, the study that was done by the National Association of Home Builders, I mean, those percentages, they stayed the same, you know, if they were in a modestly, you know, sized house versus a large house. So we're pretty comfortable with those numbers.
I just want to add, right now, you can't have four bedrooms. Zoning code doesn't allow four bedrooms in new construction. I also wanted to add, when you talk about affordable housing, when you overlay this with affordable housing location model that's currently in force, you can't put new rental housing for families south of Highway 6. This is a large area. So typically, we persist, even with housing vouchers, about 10% or less of the market. So 90% of your renters, students, families, low-income families, that's 19,000 residents, are competing for rental units. So when you lay that affordable housing location model with this area, it's difficult to house everybody that needs affordable housing, whether they're students, families. Typically, when you're looking at affordable housing providers, they're not going in your core neighborhoods, because not only do you have to compete with students, you have to compete with all those workers downtown. It's location, it's expensive. And then if you do buy a house in those core neighborhoods, the amount of money that it would take to rehab. So you've grown further out of the downtown areas, Hickory Hill, City High, Longfellow, Mark Twain, Willow Creek. If you're going to put boundaries or location, you know, like spacing requirements, that gets less and less where people, I mean, not just students can locate, like I said, because we only subsize less than 10% of the rental market. That helps.
I'm sorry, Tracy, what did you say about the four bedrooms?
Yeah, I'm sorry, multifamily.
Multi, that's multifamily, though.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, because I have that question, too.
Yep, you're good.
All right. It seems to me that there's clearly sentiment to make substantive changes in what's been proposed. I think I hear a clear support for reducing the rental cap. There might be agreement, you know, among four council members or more for some other changes, but at least one. So the question then becomes, what's the best thing to do? It sounds that we could table, like Rockney has suggested, or I don't know whatever the right verb is to use, so that we have a new proposal before us next, at our next meeting. We could do that.
I think that's probably the best. I mean, I wanted to vote on it tonight, but I think the more we've discussed it, we've got probably such significant changes that are going to come. And with Eleanor's comments about staff being able to look at some of these boundary issues and take some of that input, we're probably going to have to start over anyways. Certainly, I think if anybody has watched and listened to the discussion, hopefully they do get the idea that we are very interested in doing something and moving forward on this before the end of the year, so that won't catch them by surprise. So if we do have to collapse, we'll be comfortable doing that.
So Jeff, can staff give us a revised proposal based on the conversation you've heard? And that might involve some choice, some choices that we will need to make, so that we can find out whether there's four in support of whatever the choice is?
Yeah, I think you've been pretty clear. One, you're not comfortable with the 40% cap, and you want to see that dialed back. And that's simple enough, as Eleanor mentioned, we think there's a rational basis for that. And then the larger message is you're concerned about those edges and those transitions. And we can get in and analyze those areas on a more micro level. We can get in and say, okay, if the cap's at 35, and it's currently at 30, given the number of units in this district, you're looking at 20 new potential rentals, or 10 new potential, and try to understand the magnitude of the problem, and whether boundary adjustments make sense, or if we think that that number of units can be absorbed into a neighborhood without tipping the scales, so to speak. So that's the type of analysis that we'll do. I think it's perfectly reasonable that we'll be back at your meeting on the 21st with a recommendation, or if we feel we should, you know, give you some options and describe the pros and cons of those options.
Okay, that's what we need. So, but with regard to this, we have a motion on the floor. Should we vote on it, vote it down, or defer action?
We could make a motion to defer, move to defer.
Second.
Moved by members, seconded by Botchway. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. So we'll defer until we get new material from the staff and consider it at our November 21st meeting. Thanks for your patience, everyone. Item 10, for you hardy few. Item 10, Ped Mall Commercial Use, Ordinance amending Title 10 entitled Public Ways and Property. Chapter 5 entitled City Plaza to Allow An Association Of Downtown Businesses To Place A Commercial Structure On City Plaza Under Limited Circumstances. This is first consideration.
Move first consideration.
Second.
Moved by members, seconded by Botchway. Discussion. Simon.
Good evening. Simon Andrew, Assistant to the City Manager. The last couple of years, the downtown district has planned a winter market in Blackhawk Mini Park, been a successful market, but there have been some issues with weather and the desire for better overnight security. So what this proposal would be is really just an evolution in the winter market downtown. We believe that supporting the winter market, and one of the major benefits of it from the last couple of years, was to support local retailers and businesses at a really critical time of year for them, and a time of year where we don't have very many events downtown or other things driving foot traffic. There are provisions currently in city code for a long-term non-commercial structure, like you recently approved with the Prairie Box that's on Blackhawk Mini Park. There are several provisions for staff to approve commercial activity, whether it's mobile vendors or short-term events, but there isn't a provision for the approval of a long-term structure that would be used for commercial purposes. So what this would allow for is for the downtown district or an association of downtown businesses. I want to be clear on that, that it has to be, it couldn't be a national retailer coming in requesting this. It could be approved for up to 45 days. The structure would have to be approved by the building official for life and safety and insurance requirements set by the city's risk manager. We do have an image that I'm sure has been updated some since, but what the initial proposal was, what they were thinking. So this would allow for these structures to be used for holiday pop-up shops, they could lock them up overnight, not have to bring the merchandise in and out. They would be better protected from weather, merchandise not getting snowed, rained on, and such, and a better shopping experience for the customers in those stores. Happy to take any questions. Nancy Byrd and Betsy Potter are both here from the downtown district, and of course, can answer questions as well.
The images remind me of, I think his name's Moise Sofdie's, designed for the, what was it, World Expo in Montreal back in 1967. Lot of boxes.
And these have been popular in many communities. Oftentimes, you'll see empty shipping containers used for them. It wasn't practical here or on the Ped Mall, but it is something that's becoming more popular nationwide for small-scale pop-up shops.
Yeah. So any questions for Simon? Thanks.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to address this topic? Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for having us. I can answer any questions, but we're really excited about the evolution of this program. We are hoping that they are able to stay up in the space for four to five weeks, and that'll kind of give an opportunity of a whole bunch of different retailers and makers in our community to kind of have retail space, holiday retail space in the Ped Mall. We have a lot of excitement around it from our retailers, and the architect for it was Sanjay Son, John?
Johnny.
Johnny, there you go, from Acar. So we had a great proposal put forth, and I can share that video with you, too, that he put together. But there are three total pop-up shops. Like Simon mentioned, they are fully heated, there's electrical, they have had all considerations for ADA accessibility, and they should be really great during the holiday season. Any questions?
Just for the record, would you state your name, please?
Oh, yes, Betsy Potter. Thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Well, actually, I do have a question, just remember. So ADA accessibility in relation to the structures at the top, how does that work?
No, we don't want people up there.
Okay.
Those are just, those are just like an aesthetic.
Okay.
And there won't be anything up there, except for maybe banners on this rendering, you can't see it very well, maybe you can. It's just a display.
Gotcha.
Yes. It's just three pop-up shops that are kind of connected. And they're modular, so we can take them down and put them back up at a later date. And there's the ability to use them singularly if we needed to.
Cool. Thanks, Betsy. District Council Discussion.
I'm really pleased with how Blackhawk Mini Park has become kind of a, its own sort of, what's the word I'm looking for?
Experimental?
You know, the collab, this idea that it's, where, you know, it's tactical urbanism at its best. It's exploring, you know, the use of the space in an evolving and changing way, and we're using local talent to do it. I think that's really, really exciting to see.
I'm excited as well. Looks a little funky, but definitely down for it. The only thing, not the only thing, I just lost some chain of thought again, sorry, it's getting late.
Find it.
Yeah, forget it.
Anybody else? I'm happy to support this, so.
Can't wait to shop there.
Roll call, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Throgmorton?
Yes.
Botchway?
Yes.
Cole?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Motion carries six to zero. Thank you.
There was correspondence under item number nine.
You're right. Could I have a motion to accept correspondence for item number nine?
I'll move.
Sorry. Moved by Botchway, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Sorry, Kelly, thanks. Okay, item 11, Announcement Of Vacancies. New vacancy in the Parks and Recreation Commission, one vacancy to fill a four-year term. Applications for that position must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, December the 12th, 2017. Previous vacancies, hold on to your heads. There are two vacancies to fill unexpired terms on the Airport Zoning Board of Adjustment, one vacancy to fill an unexpired term upon appointment to the Airport Zoning Commission, one vacancy to fill a five-year term on the Board of Adjustment, two vacancies to fill five-year terms on the Board of Appeals, one's for a licensed plumber, and the other, I guess, or and for an HBA rep or qualified by experience in training, one vacancy for a Jefferson Street representative to fill a three-year term on the Historic Preservation Commission, three vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Human Rights Commission, two vacancies to fill four-year terms on the Parks and Recreation Commission, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Public Art Advisory Committee, two vacancies to fill three-year terms on the Senior Center of Commission, and one vacancy to fill a three-year term on the Telecommunications Commission. Applications for these positions must be received by 5:00 PM Tuesday, November the 14th, 2017. Item 12, Further Community Comment. Ben, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I'll just be quick. Some UASG news. Last Tuesday, UASG Senate passed a $20,000 initiative, I think it was $20,000 initiative, to fund free shuttle rides to the Cedar Rapids Airport for the holidays. Obviously, students, they find it hard, you know, Iowa City is relatively isolated from major transportation hubs, and so, you know, just a way to kind of help them out. It was on the news tonight, I think, what's the local news TV news station, KCRG? There's a nice little clip of Jacob typing on his computer in the office, but other than that, I don't have a whole lot. You know, I mentioned my fraternity's philanthropy partnering with RVAP, that was several weeks ago. I think it was the last time we saw each other, though. We raised over $1,000 for them, and so we're really excited to kind of see where that can go in the future.
Was that your, like, one-foot race?
It was, it was a .1K.
Point one K.
It was 100 meters. But yeah, it was a really good time, and so we're just excited to see how we can expand on that, so.
Good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ben. All right, item 13, City Council Information. Why don't we start with John and move right?
I have nothing tonight.
All right.
Enjoyed going to the annual human rights breakfast. A lot of great awardees, and particularly our own Officer David Schwent, so shout out to them. Went to the Ped Mall Design Meeting at the Sheridan. I think, Jim, you were there for a bit. I know Jeff was there, so I think there was some public input on, it's interesting, because there was not a whole lot of people there, and you get some really diverse opinions and very passionate opinions about what we should and should not be doing. And then, as was mentioned earlier, I think probably a majority of us were in and out of the Climate Action Committee meeting last week, and that was great to see such a large turnout for the community there.
Yep. Kingsoo.
So MSEI, Second Annual Leadership Conference, is this Friday from 8:00 to 4:00 PM. Actually, I won't be attending, because I have work, but I think it's amazing.
MSEI?
Yeah, M-S-A-E-I, yeah. I actually don't know that.
Oh, okay. Perfect.
Mediation. Mediation Services of Eastern Iowa.
Thanks.
I was actually thinking it was like some multicultural things. I'm glad you stepped in there. Then on Saturday, there's Armistice Day Observance, starting at 10:45 on the Pinnacle Crest. On Sunday, there's, I don't know why Andre Wright picked this name, but I think it's pretty interesting, Creative Jellies Open Mic Night.
It's fun, I've been there. It's great.
I think it's pretty funny. I like the name. From 7:00 to 10:00 PM at Merge, and that's it. Some fun activities in early November.
Go Hawks. I'm going to the Wisconsin game next weekend. That's it for me.
Mess it up for them.
That's right, you're going to ruin it. Pauline?
We have a listing post next Wednesday, the 15th, or I guess it's another Wednesday after that, at Oaknell this time, 1:30, is it Kingsley?
Yeah, I think so.
Kingsley's coming with me, I believe, at that one. That'll be interesting, that'll be a fun one.
I'll be there.
Remind folks that I saw on the webpage that the city is observing Veterans Day on Friday, as far as some office closures and some services that won't be available, so folks should be sure to check the website and see what's going on, what's not, in celebration of Veterans Day. And a reminder of the city employee lunch on the 16th at 11 o'clock at Terry Troopland.
Thanks, sorry, I got distracted by our colleague over here.
Kingsley.
Yeah, okay, so on the 18th of October, Brendan Nation's, three members of the Climate Action Steering Committee and I met with a visitor from India who works for a climate action organization called C40. And it was a very stimulating and interesting conversation. He's been traveling all over the country, meeting with people, talking about this stuff. Later in the day, I participated in a really enlightening reentry parole simulation sponsored by Inside Out. And, you know, so I can tell you, I didn't turn out, it didn't turn out so well for me. At one point, I was sent to jail, and I realized nobody was watching, so I walked away. You know.
Violated parole.
Escaped from jail and kind of lived my life, hoping nobody would catch me. But it was really, really an enlightening exercise. On the 20th, Kevin Sluts gave me a tremendously interesting tour of our water plant. I highly recommend it, and I want to thank Kevin and the staff out there at the water plant for showing me around. On the 4th, what is that, two days ago, several staff members, including Ashley, and I gave Congressman Dave Lopesak a walking tour of Riverfront Crossings Park. And Dave enjoyed that a lot. He felt like he was learning a lot. He says, "Whatever we can do to help." So I'm sure Ashley was taking notes.
Notes.
So that was a good thing. And for the forthcoming two weeks, I'm going to be gone twice. On Wednesday, what is, you know, two days from now, I'm going to travel to Indianapolis to participate in the Mayor's Institute on City Designs, sort of regional endeavor. So I'll be meeting with seven other mayors and the technical staff of the Mayor's Institute on City Design, presenting them with a conceptual scheme having to do with the Iowa River as it runs through Iowa City, and getting feedback. You know, they're just going to vet- You know, they're just going to vet whatever it is, I tell them. And I've gotten great help from Jeff and Karen Howard in particular for that, and I really want to thank Karen. And the following week, on Wednesday of the following week, I'm going to go to the National League of Cities, City Summit Conference in Charlotte, North Carolina. Yeah, so there's that. That's it for me. Jeff?
Nothing.
Ashley? What? I mean, it's only 10 after 12.
It feels like 11 o'clock.
Eleanor? Yeah, it does feel like 11. Kelly? All right, I want to, given that, could I have a motion to adjourn?
To the work session.
To the work session, right.
We didn't finish.
So, somebody give me a motion to adjourn to the work session.
Second.
Moved by Thomas, seconded by Taylor. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned to the work session.